Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the June 8, 2010 San Bruno City Council meeting. And I'd like to call a meeting to order, first of all, by thanking the San Bruno Garden Club for the flowers they provide at all of our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
And I'd like to ask our commanders, please lead us into place.
Please lead us into place, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, announcements. We don't have any particular announcements tonight. Item number four, presentations. No presentations this evening. Review of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda you would like to make? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 25, 2010. Any errors, omissions? Seeing none. It will be approved as submitted. Item number seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented early or council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for the consent calendar. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight, public hearings. We do have two public hearings this evening. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. The first hearing is to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and adopt a planned development PD ordinance amendment to the development plan to allow two alternative design options. Adopt a resolution approving a 12-month extension of Plan Development Permit 0502, which currently allows for the demolition of the existing 308-unit apartment complex and the development of 510 new residential units, and adopt a resolution approving Plan Development Permit 1001 and Architecture Review Permit 1006 to allow for the renovation of the existing 308 apartment units per chapter 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code as an alternative project design option under the development plan. Aimco San Bruno Apartment Partners LP is the owner and applicant. Staff report.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you know, this is the third time that staff is before you within the last five years related to the Treetops project. And I'll begin with a brief background of this project history. The apartment building that stands there today was originally approved in 1985, and it lasted for about 20 years. And in 2005, Aimco applied to the city, and it was eventually heard by the city council in 2006, for several different entitlements. The first was a general plan amendment. And what this general plan, as the council knows, the general plan controls all land use within the city. And it designates how many units you could have on each acre, how many homes you could have on each acre of land. And they amended the general plan at that point to take the maximum density from 30 units an acre to 40 units an acre. So that was part of their original entitlement request. The second thing that they did was a request to amend the zoning district there. And the zoning district on this particular site is a planned development zoning district. And you need a development plan for each planned development. And their development plan called for 510 units on the site. The third entitlement they asked for, anytime that you have a planned development, you also need a planned development permit. And what the permit does is it goes over all the details. It goes from architecture to landscaping, to how the site will be served, circulation, parking requirements, and all the little details. So this, after a number of hearings, planning commission meetings, city council hearings, this project was approved, and Aimco received entitlements for 510 units on this site. Fast forward two years, 2008, the economy had started to fall down at that point, and the Aimco realized that the project that they had proposed and got approved was too expensive for the type of construction materials and the type of parking arrangement that they had. So at that point, they applied to the city council for amendment to their planned development permit in order to allow architectural changes, as well as architectural changes primarily, as well as a new parking configuration. It was the same parking requirement, but it was a different parking configuration where the parking was embedded in the building rather than underneath the building. They also approved for, got approved for a subdivision map at that time to allow their units to turn into condominiums if they chose to go that route. Fast forward again to this year. As you know, the apartment buildings still sit up there vacant. Unfortunately, the economy has continued to fall down, and the residential lending environment is not suitable for a large development at this time. So the Aimco requested, a unique request, and what they're requesting right now is they're not having to amend the general plan because they do fit within the density arrangement with the lot line adjustment that they're proposing. But what they are doing is proposing to amend the planned development zoning district there to allow two development options. The first development option is the 510-unit building that was already approved. And the second development option, and the one that they're particularly focused on right now, is the renovation project, to simply renovate the 308 units that exist there right now, plus add a 6,500-square-foot leasing building. So what this requires is an amendment to the zoning district. They're also requesting an amendment to their previously approved planned development permit for the 510 units. And why they're doing that is the 510-unit permit was set to expire this month. So they're requesting an amendment to extend that one year. And why they're doing that, although they do not have financing in place for this development, and they're probably not going to go that route, they do want to keep all their options open, just in case the market changes or in case the lending environment changes. The entitlement that they are focused on is the second planned development permit, and they're requesting a new one now. And that's to renovate the 308 units that are on-site. So that is what they are requesting now. And just to go over some details, the architect and the developer could go more into the architectural details, and I could respond to any questions that you have. But I'll go over a few aspects of the project. The buildings, they will be upgraded. I think the most important thing is the type of materials that they will be using is more suitable for the environment. As you know, part of the problem was that they used a wood-based siding on the existing buildings, and that didn't last well in the fog that they have up in this area of San Bruno. So what they are proposing now, and was of particular interest to the planning commission, is they're proposing a hardy plank siding, which is a cement-based siding, that will do better in that environment. Regarding the layout, the layout is pretty much the same. They are proposing, as I mentioned, on the corner of Sharp Park and Skyline, they're proposing a 6,500 leasing building, about a 4,800-square-foot footprint. It'll also have a recreation-type center upstairs for the residents. The existing leasing center will be turned into a gym for the residents. Regarding parking, they're proposing to maintain the existing parking level that is there, which is about 1.68 parking spaces per unit, which you know is below the current requirement. However, there isn't room to expand, they're not expanding the number of units, and there wouldn't be physically room to expand the number of parking spaces on-site. Regarding density of this project, it's about 23 units an acre. In order to meet the minimum density requirements, they're actually submitting a lot line adjustment, which would reduce the total amount of acreage on-site, which would get the density up to about 24 units an acre, which is the minimum general plan density. And there is a condition that they have to complete this lot line adjustment soon. Regarding circulation, same circulation as before. You have Treetop Circle, which basically serves the interior of the project. You have Susan Drive, which cuts through the project and then goes down, eventually goes down to Sharp Park Road. And you have Highland Drive, which is on the northern perimeter of the site. All three of those streets are actually within the project boundaries. Although the public has gone over them in the last 20 years, they actually are part and within the public boundaries. The applicant could also go more into landscaping, but they have upgraded the landscaping, took the staff guidance of, and city council policy direction of using landscaping that is native or drought tolerant, that will really reduce the total amount of water on-site that has to be used for landscaping. A related aspect, there's a, the planning commission was really, they wanted to see this, they wanted to see the attachments. You could see all the green building techniques that they are building into this project. It's, it is at the level in which they could receive lead certification, although it's a pretty costly and timely effort to actually receive lead certification, so they're not going to go for the lead certification, but they will be lead equivalent for the project. Particular interest of the police department, they will have an on-site security guard there for nighttime hours. They also have four to five staff members on-site during daytime hours. Garbage and recycling, you'll see that there's, this is an item that took up most of the time at the planning commission. It's also an item that the neighbor here, Evergreen Ridge, is here to speak on, and there's also a number of letters that relate to this. As currently proposed, as originally proposed, Aimco had, Aimco had proposed to locate their trash and recycling within an indent into the Evergreen Ridge property that was located only about 15 feet away from the Evergreen Ridge buildings. Given the size of the property, especially the size of the south property line, the adjoining property line that Evergreen Ridge and Treetops shares, we asked Aimco to move that trash area to a more suitable location. They did move it up the property line, so now the trash compactor sits about 40 feet away, 44 feet away, from the nearest Evergreen Ridge building. Before, we recommended approval of this location. We met with ecology. We wanted to make sure, A, that the noise is contained, that it's minimal, and B, that the, that there's not odor that comes out of the trash compactor. Regarding noise, this only would be compacted once a day. It would also only be accessed by, because of, because they can't compact, and this is a preferred method of ecology, because they can't compact, they only have to access the site once a week. Ecology has also agreed to only access the site between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. to further reduce the noise impact to the adjoining neighbor, Evergreen Ridge. Regarding odor, it's a sealed container, so you don't have the same odor problems that you have with the older open dumpsters where the lids could be opened at some times, where trash could be hanging out of it, and you do have a lot of odor issues. By way of comparison, the crossing, Meridian and Paragon, the first two have trash compactors, similar models, that are located directly underneath units at the crossing. And we do know, we have not seen complaints, ecology has not seen complaints about noise or about odor. So staff is confident in our recommendation that there will not be an impact on the adjoining neighbors. It's also just a point of interest and also shown within your staff report. Although, when it's the same size trash compactor, draw also, Evergreen Ridge also has a dumpster located along the same adjoining property line. The planning commission wanted Aimco to investigate other areas away from that southern property line to see if they could be suitable. Aimco did explore five other alternatives. The primary obstacle to locating any of those, I think there's three primary obstacles. Number one, they're already below the parking, today's parking requirement. So we do not want to see an elimination of more spaces within the development. And most other spots where they could locate it would eliminate spaces. The second is, there's a lot of easements that go along the property, and it's difficult to locate the trash enclosure area in an area that's outside of easement. And the third thing is that the Aimco did not want this in the doorstep, the front doorstep of their property, so they did not want to locate it right in the front entrance. So with all those three factors, and given the fact that this is suitable, and that there won't be noise or odor impacts, staff is confident in our recommendation to locate it in this new spot. One change from the planning commission, that planning commission, they had recycling still located in that 15-foot indent area, and the trash enclosure moved 40 to the 40 feet away. We've asked them to put those all together, so there will be no longer the recycling 15 feet away from Evergreen Ridge. They'll actually be all located in the same location. One other thing, there was a letter from North Coast Water about the easement area. I spoke to the general manager about an hour ago. They're no longer having the request to continue. They have worked out an agreement with Aimco. They no longer have an objection to the project. Two conditions of approval that we need to look at. The first one relates to the number of street trees. There's a, the street tree requirements within the code is they have to put a certain number of street trees in, dependent on the number of the street planters that they have. That equates to a little bit over 100 trees. We could have, we put an exact number of how many would count towards that street tree requirement based on the current landscaping plan that they have. However, if their final landscaping plans show that there are actually more street trees, we would credit them that total amount. The remaining amount could go towards a street tree planting program in the neighborhood. Similar, a successful program, similar to what we have with Summerhill Project, some type of R2A program to plant street trees around the neighborhood. And the second condition, one that we should have in and left out, relates to the Sharp Park and Susan Drive intersection. As the council knows, it's a difficult intersection. As you go down that little snake road on Susan Drive, you have to crane your neck back to look. And the, what we like to have added is that the applicant shall trim or remove vegetation to the satisfaction of the public service director to improve site visibility of Susan Drive and Sharp Park intersection. We'd also like to make sure they maintain it, so the landscaping shall be maintained to ensure adequate site visibility for the life of the project. So those are the basic overview of the project. As the council knows, there is one remaining issue of disagreement between staff and the applicant, and this has to do over roadway and utility ownership issues. There, as I mentioned, there are three primary roads that serve the site. There's Treetop Circle, there's Susan Drive, and there's Highland Drive. All three streets are within the project area, and although they were originally offered for dedication in 1985, were never officially accepted by the city, and they haven't been maintained by the city at that time. As condition in resolutions, and as proposed to the planning commission, these, the roadway as well as the utility systems would remain private. They would be privately maintained, privately owned. Susan Drive and Highland Drive would have a public access easement over them, so that the public can continue to use the roadways that they have over the last 25 years. What Aimco is proposing, is requesting the city do, is that the city would actually accept the roadways and accept the utilities underneath these roadways for the life of the project. This is only for Susan Drive and Highland Drive. We're actually in agreement for Treetop Circle. Tree, Aimco has agreed that the Treetop Circle utilities and the Treetop Circle roadway, they would maintain, they would own. Two important things to note. The first is, it's not one or the other. The city could accept the roadways, could accept Susan Drive and Highland Drive, but not accept the utilities underneath them. Regarding the utilities themselves, it's something that's important, and the reason that staff is recommending it this way, all the utilities that Aimco is proposing for us to take ownership of only serve Treetops residents. So to put it, to make a common analogy, it's like a giant lateral for the system. As you know, in your front yard of a single-family home, you have your lateral that connects to the main sewer, to the main sewer system. In this project, they have the on-site utilities, although some of them are underneath these roadways, that eventually connect to the sewer, to the sewer system. So staff does not feel it's good public policy, or good policy from planning or public work standpoint, to take on these utilities that only serve the Treetops development. The roadway, it has been served, it has been a private, used as a private roadway, although there's been public access over the same 25 years. Overall, there probably is more public interest in the public roadway than there is on the private utilities that only serve the Aimco residents. So that's summary of the issues that we stand right now. If you have any questions, I would say.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Ibera. Where are we with, can you, can you again reiterate, where are we with the trash, the compactor?
So as is proposed and as we're recommending right now, the trash compactor, we're pointing out where, the trash compactor would be located on the area that she's pointing to now. It's about 40 feet away, or 44 feet away, from the nearest building in Evergreen Ridge, and it would be completely enclosed, in a completely enclosed structure.
And so the objection letters that we have in front of us are objecting to that, to that option. And so my question is, I remember the 510-unit project, and there was a trash facility, I don't know if the compactor was there, but it was adjacent to Susan Drive on the southeast corner, somewhat sort of like a overflow parking area, I remember. Why, has there been any option to it being located there, or possibly where those carports are or something?
I believe where the.
I don't know what this thing looks like. I don't know if, I don't.
Yeah, there's a attachment that.
I don't know how tall it is, how can you screen it?
Yeah, we'll pass that. Okay, yeah, Evergreen Ridge, that during the original one, also did not want it at that location. There's a view easement in that area. There's also many other easements that run along that property line, which make it difficult. Lisa's getting a color exhibit. There's black and white copied exhibits in the staff report, but the color exhibit will give a better photo simulation of what the trash enclosure looks like. As you know, there's a lot more standards now for trash enclosures than there used to be. You can't just build an open dumpster anymore because of stormwater regulations and, of course, aesthetic considerations.
to Ever, not adjacent to Evergreen?
Yeah, unfortunately, based on the site constraints, staff, this is, this is the area that we're, that they propose that we're recommending be the final location of it. We were not recommending it when it was actually in a closer location at 15 feet, but we feel this is far away enough, taking into consideration other site limitations.
And the planning commission approved this alternate location?
No. What the planning commission did was, they asked them to explore, they felt that Aimco had not put enough time exploring other locations on-site. We actually started going over like each location at the planning commission meeting, which, which took a long time and really wasn't, didn't lead to anything. So they asked them to explore and then present to view the alternative locations.
It's nice of them.
Anything else, Michael, any questions?
On the same, on the same subject, is there anything quantifiable that we could look at to actually say, there's a certain number of feet, so many decibels of sound? I mean, it's, I mean, a nuisance is kind of hard to quantify. But if we had some numbers and say we could compare it to, I don't know, a car starting up, a truck, something?
What we do have, and what would also be required for this, as required for any residential district, is we have noise limits and ambient noise levels for residential districts. So we could add to this condition that, that we could add a condition to this that it be consistent with all ambient noise requirements for residential districts. And they could have a test, or we could do a test, and if they do not meet those ambient noise requirements, then they'll have to find a different location on-site.
Mr. Chair, just to go off what Councilmember Salazar, can you equate that for the average person maybe listening to us? What does that mean? Because it sounds good, but the average person may not know what you're referencing as far as noise level.
So, I mean, the best way to, we usually use ambient noise levels for construction, for construction-related activity. And, you know, there's a 65-decibel level for after, after 10:00 p.m. at noise areas. And that is generally, you know, if you hear a hammer, that's usually about at a 65-decibel level. I don't know all the particular ones. I could get back to the council of that. There's actually, you know, noise studies that show which, you know, a car starting up is at 85 decibels, a plane going over is 125 decibels. But I don't have those in front of me.
That gives us some range of understanding. That's all I was looking for, so we can put it in.
They've limited to 9 to 12.
Yeah, yeah, the time restriction's also in there.
And going back to the same item, a couple of these letters, and glancing at them, it's the odor is a concern. I know you said it's enclosed. The noise, which you somewhat addressed, the visual, which I think it's concealed, it's, what is the common practice or knowledge as far as the odor concern, or as far as its visual effect, or as far as?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, out of staff's, you know, out of the top three concerns, visual concerns, noise concerns, and odor concerns, I think odor was probably the one, because it's a constant, that we were most concerned about. After meeting with ecology and finding out that these same type of compactors are actually directly underneath units at the crossing, and there are, there are not complaints, we are confident that there will, there will not be those, the odor impacts that there are typically found when you have open dumpster situations.
Any other questions of staff at this time? I see the applicant is in the audience. Would you like to address the council before I open the public hearing?
Thank you. Sasan? My name's Patty Schwaeder. I'm senior vice president at Department Investment and Management Company, or Aimco. We're happy to see you again, and we're hopeful that the third time is a charm for this project. I think Erin gave a wonderful history of looking forward and looking back, and we would like to look forward tonight, hopefully, and get this project off the ground. I've got a whole team here. I'll introduce some of them. Sean Finnegan, who's our regional development planner, he's somewhere around here. Scott MacArthur, our regional property management manager, who's hoping that actually we'll have a property to manage as we build and fill up Treetops or Pacific Bay Visas. Jim Van Sickle, our VP of Development, is here. Cecily Barkley and George Corey are wonderful attorneys, and then we've got others on the development team that Sean will introduce. And again, I want to thank the staff for bearing with us and really working hard over these last few years to find a project that can be built, constructed, and financed in this turbulent market, and also thank the council for their patience as well. The first slide, Jim, oh, there you are. Our goals are virtually the same as they have been, and that is to provide a major gateway to the city of San Bruno. Our property sits in a wonderful gateway, and we want to make use of it. As Erin said, we want to add an alternative development plan that's consistent with the previous zoning approvals. We want to create a well-designed residential neighborhood, and we've been back with a couple of plans, but we believe that this is contextual with the neighborhood and will be high-quality architecture, architectural features, and excellent landscaping. Take advantage of the location and views. It's beautiful up there, even in the clouds. It's a wonderful location. And revitalize the neighborhood. We feel, as you do, it's been empty far too long, and the best thing that could happen is we build the project, fill it up, and revitalize the neighborhood and this portion of the city. I want to stress that we do want to continue our partnership with the city. All of you, the staff, have just been terrific. Our neighbors have been working with us over the years, sometimes understanding, sometimes getting on us for doing various things, but thank you very much for sticking with us. And also our partnership with the Building Trades Council, which we have signed an agreement to work with them to the extent possible to make sure that this is a union labor project and gets built that way to the extent that it's financially feasible. And, and again, we do want to gain approval for a project, and I can't stress this enough, that can be actually financed and built in today's market. We're one of the largest owners of housing in the country. We're doing two projects this year. Last year, we did zero. You're one of the two projects. And so we're very eager to get this off the ground and bring it to reality. Project highlights, Erin mentioned most of this. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Major renovation of all 308 apartments, complete interior and exterior renovation of all the 14 buildings, associated site work, common area improvements. Buildings will be down to the studs. They will not be recognizable when you see them. The floor plans will be significantly upgraded. There will be a new clubhouse with a leasing center to be built on the vacant parcel on the corner of Sharp Park and Skyline Boulevard. Susan Drive, this was a question in the last couple approvals, will remain open as a public roadway. Hopefully, the city will accept ownership and maintenance of that road. The hillside, our neighbors to the hillside have commented on the landscaping. Our landscape architects will talk a little in more detail, but I want to say, our plan is to have it sustainable with drought-tolerant plants, and make it really a credit to the property and to the city. Green project with energy-efficient units and energy-efficient appliances. This project will be 500 times more energy-efficient than the previous one. That's a huge bang for the buck. We're looking at Energy Star appliances, and lighting, low-flow toilets, showers, irrigation controllers, everything that we can put in that will make this a much more energy-efficient project. And I know Councilwoman O'Connell has worked with us. And I know Councilwoman O'Connell has worked with us over the years on the recycling trash compaction program. As Aaron said, we did go around the site, almost the entire site at the planning commission, looking for spots, and I believe we've got it appropriately designed and located now with advanced technology that will not be loud, be very efficient and really minimize the need for trucks onsite. So I will now turn it over to Sean to introduce the architectural team, and then hopefully we can get back to some of those issues and questions that you had.
Thanks, Patty. Mayor, members of the council and also staff, my name is Sean Finnegan with Aimco. And I'd like to also thank all of you for your time and efforts on this project over the many years and more so recently. We think this is a great milestone for us and the city, and we're really excited about moving forward, and we're hoping that we gain your approval tonight to get this thing off and running. With that, I'd like to introduce our architect to go into just a little bit more detail on what we're planning on doing with the buildings architecturally and also our landscape architect. So first would be John Garrison with Newman Garrison Partners, and then followed by Paul Reed with Reed and Associates.
Thank you, Sean, and council members. This view that you see here is the new building we're calling the Leasing Center at the corner of Sharp Park and Skyline. And that is an all-new building on what's currently a vacant parcel. It's a two-story building and will be built to all the new standards that are in current code. Let's move forward to, more to the elevations, the color elevations. Aaron did an excellent job of describing the project and all the things that we are doing. I wanted to add also that one of the things that came up during planning commission was a concern for better materials, and that also was brought up in Aaron's review of where the project has been over the last 20 years. We will not be using many wood products on this exterior. They will be wood-like in appearance. You can see from this, this view and another. Here's the new recreation building. This is current, this is the current leasing center, which has a completely different roof. We're actually, actually building a whole new structure here as well. It will have a beach-like or ocean appearance to it, east coast appearance. And though the sightings and such are wood-like materials, they are actually very mold-resistant and fire-resistant materials. Here, I also wanted to point out that even though the all 14 buildings currently are the exact same building, they have all the same siding, they're all the same color, we wanted to come in and using the same structure, the structure actually is very good out there. We're going to reskin it with very varied materials here. They're all siding, but there's different types of siding. There's some new railings. We're going to be adding some brick veneer. We'll also have, go to the next one, Jim, two different color schemes onsite so that they're not all the same color and not all the same look. All the roofing will be replaced, all the siding, all the windows, everything on the outside will be all new. Let's go to the next one. I just wanted to talk about some of the unit plans, go to the unit plans. The last thing I would want to just bring up is that even though the current project has no accessible units, those for handicap needs, we are making some accommodation where we can, where the grading is level enough, this is a hillside location, to allow us to do, to make some units that will be accessible so that people with special needs will be able to come in and use these apartments just like any other current apartment. In that regard, we're not going to be able to meet the current California code, which the city building official knows about, but it's an attempt to gain some, actually in everything that we're doing, to make the project better than it ever was, better materials, better plans and a more interesting color palette. So with that, I'd like to introduce Paul Reed, who's our landscape architect.
Good evening. Glad to be here this evening. My name is Paul Reed. I'm with Reed Associates. On the landscaping, we're basically redoing all the landscaping on the project. The hillside right now is, has quite a few, quite a quantity of pampas grass that will be removed, and basically the whole courtyard is going to be redone, walkways widened, all-new walkways, sitting areas, covered barbecue areas. We're really trying to create an experience where people can use the outside as much as possible. And also, we'll be doing this with using native and non-native drought-tolerant plant material. All the irrigation will be completely redone with drip systems in narrow areas and efficient spray systems in larger areas. And we're adding over 200 trees to the project. Some of the trees right now that are existing on the site that are not healthy will be replaced, and the trees are going to be replaced at a level of about three to one new trees for every tree removed. Thank you.
Could I ask a question at this point?
Sure, go ahead.
Regarding, regarding the architect, I believe Patty mentioned that the buildings will be stripped to the studs. I mean, is that, is that the plan of, has every building been inspected and so they will be thoroughly stripped?
Yes, they will all be thoroughly stripped. They have not all been pre-inspected. We have gone through an inspection of some of the buildings, or we inspected all the buildings, but we can't know all of the damage that's there until you really go in and there's a lot of trash, there's overgrown plants. Once we pull off all the siding and all the interiors, then we can see where any damage may have been done to any of the studs. And actually, we found that the structure is quite good. A lot of the framing looks, you know, brand-new, just like it's been never, never touched. A lot of the, the bad-looking conditions you see out there are, there's mildew and there's some mold on the exterior materials. There is some obvious rot. All those things will be replaced. I didn't mention, but the building official also asked our structural engineer to improve the structure of the buildings from where they were originally done. They can't be made to meet current code because we really can't change the foundations that they sit on. That would have to also be redone. But we are making improvements to the structural frame so that they're stronger than they were before. And that will be done on a building-by-building review with the city.
So is it fair to say that in some cases there might be a fair condition of a building, and so it won't be stripped? And there may be some sheet rock left and some roofing left?
No, actually, our intention is to remove all the drywall, no matter what shape it's in, all the roofing, all the windows, doors, everything down to the studs. The only thing that will remain are the structural items. Any exterior plywood that is a part of the frame will remain, but even those are going to be inspected, reviewed for nailing. If things are rusted, connections aren't good, they'll be replaced and made better than new.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to invite Cecily, our attorney, to go through some last slides, if we could.
Great.
Good evening. I'm Cecily Barkley, and I am the land use attorney, who I've been working on this project along with most of the people at this table and behind me. For the last five years, I was involved in the first two project approvals and have spent a lot of time in the last six to eight months working on this set of approvals. I did send to the city council and to staff a letter that I hope each of you have received, and I do for the record want to give a copy to the city clerk so that we have that in the record this evening. And what I'd like to do is, I won't go through all of the issues in the letter, but I do think that these are very important and critical items that we get resolved as quickly as possible so that the project can move forward. It is very much Aimco's desire, and I believe everybody that's worked on this project's desire, to have the third time be a charm. And so the first and most important issue is the ownership of the roads and the utilities. And I would like to take a few moments to talk about the roads in particular. And that is, I've laid out in this letter that I wrote, the history, which everybody acknowledges, they were offered for dedication, and at that time, there was a public access easement put on these roads. So the public has been using them for 20 years, and there's no way to stop the public from using them. We cannot take them back and own them privately. As a result, when we went out to get financing, the only lender that we have who can obtain the kind of guarantee that we need from HUD has told us that HUD will not, their staff has told them here in the San Francisco office, they will not guarantee a loan that's secured by collateral with a public road down the middle of it. You know, after 20 years of apparently no maintenance, we're spending 100, we're willing to spend $158,000 of maintenance as part of this condition of approval. We'll do that. If all we had to do was spend another $150,000 in 20 years, we wouldn't be asking you to please accept dedication of these roads. It's not about the cost of maintaining them. We'll bring them up to speed, and we think that the maintenance costs are not that significant. What's significant is that it might interfere with our ability to get a loan. And Rick Andrews, whose letter I gave you, explained to me that HUD has gone from guaranteeing 10% of the multifamily products that are being built and financed today to over 50%, and that the demands on HUD are enormous, and there are dozens of loans in the pipeline. This is a very significant loan for them. And if we make it complicated and we become a roadblock instead of something that's easy for HUD to do, they could turn their attention to a simpler loan, a loan that actually is geared towards restricted affordable housing. This is a market rate project. It does provide a lot of workforce housing because of the nature of it, but there aren't any restrictions on it. We are genuinely worried that if we don't do this right, we may lose an opportunity to get the only financing that we've been able to secure in the last five years for a project that's this close. So we really ask you to consider this in accepting the dedication of the roads, which we think is consistent with the history, and we do want to give them to you in the best condition possible, and we're agreeing to put up a letter of credit that will do that maintenance work and that we'll do it as soon as we get the financing in place and as soon as the city would accept them. So we're going to get them as good a condition as we can. On the idea of separating the sewer and water and storm drains that are under the public roads, we are open to keeping some obligation for the sewers, but we have to caveat that by saying we've got to go back and talk to our lender. We may run into the same roadblock, pardon the pun, that because their security is going to be on the private property for the lender, that if we then still have an obligation to own and maintain utilities that are in a public right-of-way, it could again throw our loan potential wrinkle that we're not going to recommend. This isn't again about, that it's an extensive amount of maintenance. In fact, again, over 20 years, we're only going to have to do about $40,000 worth of work. So we wouldn't necessarily mind keeping these sewers and maintaining them, but we have to go back and make sure it's not going to mess our loan up. I just telling you, that is what this issue is all about. And so we could do that. If we're, get direction from the council to try to work this out and be able to keep the sewers, we could do that. I think, and if you'd like, we could have Sean Finnegan and Aaron Aiken or whomever speak to this. I think the storm drains actually do serve Evergreen, and they come off of Evergreen and they run through the public road. And so I think it may actually make sense for the city to keep the storm drains. It's not an expensive item, but I think that should be talked about as well as the water. But it's not a big deal. These are things that we think we can work out. The key is that if we keep ownership of any of these items and maintenance obligation, then it not do anything to complicate our financing, and that is our most serious concern on that topic. In terms of the other items, I know that there was a discussion by Aaron of two issues, the first being the roads and the utilities, and the second being the, Aaron, I can't remember the item you mentioned, but it was fine.
Street trees.
The street trees, that was fine. There were a number of other issues that I do want to bring to the council's attention in our letter. And the first is that Aimco is willing to spend at least $220,000, it may be more, on improving the sewers on the private property and under the roads. We're willing to do the road maintenance and all of the other financial conditions, but they do disagree with staff's recommendation that as part of this rehabilitation project, that they also reimburse the city for $179,000 that was spent to repair an existing off-site sewer line. We think that should be paid for out of all of the various sewer fees that are collected throughout the city, not hookup fees, but ongoing sewer costs that are funded as well as property taxes. We're just another property owner like everybody else trying to keep our 308-unit apartments going, and we don't think we should have to reimburse the city for an off-site improvement that wasn't put in place to serve this 308-unit project. And so as a result, we don't feel that it's fair that that now be imposed on our project. The other issues, we'll come back to that one if you'd like. Let me just, I'll go ahead and address the others. The next issue on the, which is on page five of our letter, is just we want to make clear that we'll repair all the sewers by the certificate of occupancy. We've also wanted to make clear in the conditions that the, that there not be any additional capacity or sewer and water hookup fees, that we're in the conditions because we already have a project. But any new items like the clubhouse, of course, we would pay for those connection fees. We're also prepared to replace the water meters that are appropriately sized for the project. There were water meters on, they've been taken off. We're going to get charged for new water meters. We've proposed some language in the conditions, but we're prepared to do that. We've also submitted a maintenance plan to the city that we think reflects the conditions of approval and the discussions that we've been having. But we did offer, based on some conversations that we have with staff over the last month or two, some changes to the condition about how the maintenance would work. I think those will be acceptable to staff when they have an opportunity to review them. And we've also proposed that for certain of these items, that if we can go and get this financing in place guaranteed by HUD over the summer, get the financing closed by September and have construction in October, that we don't want to be doing some of these items that are really meant to be longer-term maintenance if there's no activity on the property. So we're proposing that if we start the demolition process by November 1st, that certain of the painting and power washing and glass removal would not need to occur between now and November 1st, but all the other items of the maintenance plan would, and that would include weekly inspections and pool maintenance and insurance and those types of things. And that's detailed in the letter, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has. We also thought important to add a condition, making it clear that we need to get a lot line adjustment done to make sure that the density on the project site meets the general plan requirements. And that covers, there was also a condition about making sure that garages are used primarily for parking vehicles and wouldn't impede any, you know, family, any storage that a family might use in their garage wouldn't impede their ability to park their cars there, and that any new structures wouldn't be imposed over, built over PUEs. There was a requirement that there be no structures over public utility easements. At the moment, there are some structures over some existing easements. So we just made it clear that the new building wouldn't be over any existing PUE. And that summarizes all the issues laid out in the letter. I believe that with the exception of the reimbursement of the $179,000 and the ownership of the road, that the other conditions are items that we will be able to work out the language with staff, but that we will need some direction from council on the acceptance of the road and possibly the utilities if we cannot get comfortable that it wouldn't interfere with our HUD financing, and that also because we're paying all the road improvements and the sewer improvements, that we not also have to reimburse the city for the $179,000 that was spent last year. And that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Cecily, I have a question, just so we're clear. Your red mortgage capital letter refers specifically to the ownership of the road, not utilities at all, and the difficulty you would have if the city didn't assume ownership of that. It doesn't mention utilities at all, and tonight you said there may be difficulty?
And that's what we need to look into. We had not ever discussed with the city the idea of separating the two, because if we didn't, it wasn't a path that we explored. didn't, it wasn't a path that we explored with the lender. But, my understanding in general, speaking as to how it's spoken with Rick, is that HUD does not want to be lending against property for which there are off-site obligations or ownership of roads that are actually being used by the public. So, all we need to do is make sure that the commitment of the borrower to maintain utilities off-site, in this case, under a public road, wouldn't do anything to mess the loan up. It might not, in other words, it may be okay, you're right. The letter's very focused on the ownership of the roads. And if it is okay, then we wouldn't object to keeping ownership and maintenance of the utilities. But we really do feel like we need to go back and explore that with Rick because we haven't yet. And we just sort of lumped ownership of roads in general in our discussion. So, I think we need to look at that a little more closely.
Any questions for the developer?
I'm just going to make a comment. I'm not prepared to make any decision on utilities until I know what utilities are actually there. I don't know, we don't know what's running through those roads. We don't know, all we know is that there's been a video of the sewers and all we know is there's been a report submitted that you're going to, the condition is that you rehabilitate based on the report. So, there's not a utility plan. We're talking about utilities, taking utilities within a, within a road that we want to take ownership of, but we don't know what's there. So, concerned about sewer lines, I'm not really concerned about stormwater, I'm concerned about sewer lines and water lines. That's where we've had a history of private property failures and where the city has had to go in and spend a lot of labor and time in, you know, in repairing and fixing. So, it's a big unknown to me.
We could have Sean speak a little bit more to what we do know because of the video work that has been done. And I believe the condition, you know, does recommend that all the work that's been done in that report be completed if there is a need. We're not going to physically know what's under the roads unless somebody took them out. What we know is what's there by the videoing, that's my understanding. And I don't know how much more we'll be able to learn about that in the next couple of weeks.
There's not a utility plan, we don't.
Yeah, I think, I think, well Sean, why don't you speak to that because I think you have one.
Councilman, we do have an existing utilities plan that we provided to staff. We actually reviewed that existing utilities plan with Public Works today as a matter of fact. The existing utilities plan, our engineers here as well, that's taken from the improvement plans that were prepared back in 1985 that were reviewed and approved by city staff. So, we have also potholed various utilities out there, both in the streets and in the private property. We are pretty confident on where the utilities are and what they are in terms of their sizes and where they go. So, and we have provided that to staff. That was a requirement that staff asked for a couple of months ago. So, we do have a plan that does show all those and they're very consistent with what was, what was reviewed and approved by staff back in 1985 when they were actually installed.
Okay. Sean, are you in agreement with staff's statement earlier that the utilities that were mentioned service treetops only?
The, the only difference that I would say is the storm drains do service other, we know for a fact that they at least service Evergreen.
How about sewer and water?
As far as sewer, we do concur with staff that it serves only our property. Water is part of a loop system that is, we're, we all, we do know that there is water pressure issues up on that area. We don't know if our system was taken off, if that would affect the neighboring systems because as you know, water is all under pressure and it's part of a loop system. There are not specific lines that just serve our property because it's part of a loop system. So, that's a little bit of a differ from staff. As far as the sewer, yes, I concur with that.
Okay. But Cecily, you said that you would be willing to absorb the ownership of the utilities as long as it didn't jeopardize your loan. Is that correct?
That is, that is what we're proposing at this point. We would need to check and make sure that that's not an issue with our financing.
Okay. Any other questions?
With the only difference of that being the storm drain, I think it's very critical that that goes along with the road.
Understood. Okay, understood. We're in kind of an awkward situation right now. We have a public hearing, we want to try to introduce an ordinance, but until you have that answer, we sure don't want to mess it up. I mean, maybe we have to, I'd be willing tonight to listen to the public because they came down here and see what other concerns they may have, but we may want to continue this till the next meeting.
Well, I'll let the city attorney speak to this, but I think that the portions of the project that relate to the first reading of the ordinance might be able to go forward because the, well, I'll let the city attorney speak on this one issue.
That's really, that's really a decision for, is this one?
Yeah.
That's really a decision for the city council, how you want to approach this. And if you're not feeling comfortable about the project, then don't introduce the ordinance. If there is a certain comfort level, you know, then you, then you could go in that direction. You really have the option. It depends on how comfortable you are in approving the project as a whole.
My only concern is that, you know, we asked a number of times and they provided the information for the roadway and the lending and the, and the possible difficulties. And I would hate for them to have to come back at the next meeting saying, whoa, you know, capital, red capital, red mortgage says we have a real issue with HUD because we're going to absorb the utilities and now our loan is all messed up and in the meantime, we're in the middle of an ordinance.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Mayor, that actually you wouldn't want to have taken the step of approving the project and then be relooking at whether you're going to have to absorb a very costly and important, you know, financial consideration with the utilities. So.
So, we've heard from, through the chairs, so we've heard from staff. What is the issue then with the possible postponement of two weeks? Is there?
What I was going to suggest, if you wanted to take some public testimony, maybe we could chat a little bit amongst ourselves while you're doing that. Because I think we should talk a little bit about the cost of delay of two weeks. It's also, I mean, it is possible to introduce something. We're all here, we understand what's going on that might have to get amended and reintroduced. It's not ideal, but at least we could take a shot at trying to be as close as possible to where we think we're going. And it wouldn't be the first or last time that second ordinances don't get read, but it's not ideal. But maybe we could chat a little bit amongst ourselves about what the two weeks means.
That's fine.
And I'm assuming you meet again the first.
22nd.
I'm sorry, in June. If we'd started the first reading on the 22nd, then we'd come back for a second reading. Okay, so July 13th. Okay, all right.
All right. Before you leave, any other questions of the developer at this point in time? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and see what the public has to say, ask any questions you may have. If you have any questions for the council developer, please line up at the podium.
Hi. I'm Subu and I'm a resident of Summit Road, which abuts Evergreen Ridge.
Excuse me, could you speak right into the microphone?
Yeah, I'm Subu and I'm a resident of Summit Road, which abuts Evergreen Ridge. I'm interested in this project going through, the renovation project, because that site is a nice sort at this point in time and there's garbage lying there often. But I have one concern about parking, right? As such, with treetops closed, Summit Road is full of cars. I mean, in the sense that there's not enough parking in Evergreen Ridge and every night people, I see people coming up, parking there and then walking, walking down the road to Evergreen Ridge. Now with treetops coming and treetops also not having sufficient parking, I think life around that area is going to be seriously impacted by a parking problem. Aimco might come back and say that this is a situation that existed before and so, but I don't see any reason why us, why we cannot rectify the situation. I mean, just because we suffered in the past doesn't mean we have to suffer in the future also. And I think this is an opportunity for the city to rectify the situation. And I don't think the city has done any study as to what is the, going to be the parking impact if treetop is allowed to go forward with this renovation project. And my take is that any land that is at this point available should first be dedicated to bringing the parking level of treetop up to code and then any new construction be allowed.
All right, thank you very much. Try to get some answers for you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Carolyn Livingston, Cheryl Drive. I want to make it clear that I'd like to see this project be successful. I am retired union worker. I also have a son in the trades. I'm for the trades getting some jobs, they need them. But I do want to remind you that the residents in Pacific Heights have to live with this project long after everybody's gone. So, I do have, I'm very disappointed about one thing. I had hoped that Egress Road would be corrected. And I thought maybe that'd be our reward for putting up with the problems we've put up with the last few years. Unfortunately, I'm not seeing any hint that that's going to go forward. So, I would certainly hope, it was mentioned and I have requested, that that area along there be cleaned out. It's a litter area, litter, well, I think Aaron Aiken can back me up on that, he's seen what's up there. I've cleaned it up in the past, frankly, I can't keep doing it with a bad back. But it needs to be cleaned, it needs to be cleared so that people can see. You know, you have a lot of older people living in that community too, I'm probably one of them. It's hard to turn your head around to see back there sometimes. Some days the neck doesn't want to go the same way you want to go. So, I would like to see something done about making sure that they maintain on a regular basis and that they clean up that whole area along Sharp Rock Road. I understand they own it, so I don't think we're out of line to ask for that. Also, I'd like to be assured that they're not parking more along Susan Drive, there's more cars. And I'm not saying they'd be the only ones, of course, tree, Evergreen is loaded with cars along there. There is never maintenance up there unless I really gripe about it. It's constant litter all along Susan Drive there because the cars don't move and, you know, they can't get in there to clean it up. So, that's another area that needs to be cleaned and it needs to be maintained both by Evergreen and treetops and by the city of San Bruno. I'm also want to ask a question, I'm assuming that surrounding residents cannot use the clubhouse facilities, that we're not invited in any way there. Also, I'd like to ask if there's going to be a homeowners association. And I ask that because I've had to live and my neighbors on Cheryl Drive with the Summerhill project. And while it was a nice project and they've been fairly cooperative, we've run into problems back there with the drainage ditch, also with people not maintaining their backyards. And thank God they had a homeowners, because when I got hold of Summerhill, they put me in touch with someone. And we met, my neighbors and I met with them and told them they ought to get the show on the road to clean it up back there or we'd have water in our backyards. So, it's very important that there be somebody up there that, whether it's a homeowners association or what, that we're guaranteed that they're going to maintain. That property was not maintained in past years. I saw many, many problems up there and not just these recent ones due to the economy. So, we need to have strong emphasis on maintenance and keeping it up on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, thank you for taking my comment. I'm, I'm a longtime resident at Evergreen Ridge Apartments. I remember treetops when it was alive and thriving and we look forward to having new neighbors once again. I'm just simply here to speak about a dissatisfaction with where the trash compactor is going to be placed. This is a huge property, my property is probably just a fraction of what's here. And I understand that the builders here will want to have very, you know, would want to have premium pricing for these wonderful new apartments, but I just don't feel that it's fair that we should have to, you know, pay the price for that too. So, just, just some strong considerations, if you would, regarding the placement of this compactor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Excuse me, just for the record, would you give the city clerk your name? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brad Karinki. I am a partner with Evergreen Ridge Apartments next door to treetops. Wanted to preface my remarks that we strongly support treetops effort, Aimco's efforts to bring this project to completion. As I think we all know in this room, this project as it's set, abandoned, has been a blight on this neighborhood and our property has certainly been affected by that, our residents and our ability to do, to do business and rent to new residents of San Bruno. We have owned our property since 1986, so it's almost 25 years we've owned the building. We don't sell the property and we expect to own it for another 25 years, God willing. Our objection is, you've commented already, you've received several letters, I believe, from residents of our property as well as ourselves, is again, the trash compactor. The trash compactor, just to make sure we're clear here, this is a change from the original development. The original development had your typical dumpsters. The, as you can see by the site, just to give you some perspective here, we are the only improved property on any of the four property lines of the property. And yet, you know, treetops is, you know, continuing to insist that this dumpster be located on our property line. The treetops property is approximately 13 acres. I just find it very difficult to believe that creative minds cannot figure out a way to locate this trash compactor somewhere else on their site away from our residence. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Additionally, the trash compactor is actually located closer to our residence, it's not our trash compactor, it's treetops for the benefit of their residents, it's located closer to our residence than their own. It's at least double the distance, if not triple the distance, to the nearest unit as compared to our particular property. I also want to address the staff report and some of the comments have talked about the fact that this trash compactor will only be picked up by the garbage company once per week. They're not emphasizing the fact that this trash compactor is going to be used daily, daily. This property will probably have upwards of 1,000 families in 300 units. You know, they've got one in two bedroom apartments. So, every day for a three-hour period, they're going to have the staff of this property drag two year, two yard containers across their property, causing noise on the other side of our property to dump the garbage in every single day. They proposed to do this nine to 12, we certainly appreciate the consideration, but it's not taking into consideration that, you know, many people in our building look swing shift overnight and so they need to sleep during the day. So, we need to take that into consideration. We spoke with the garbage company. As far as location, the garbage company has said that they can pick up the trash from the trash compactor at any accessible point on treetops property. I believe this trash compactor is probably on wheels, so it can be pushed out. So, again, we simply don't understand why the insistence, especially after, by the way, just as background, we have had meetings with Aimco to express our objections, we've met on site with Aimco. This was a big deal, the planning commission. There were strong objections from the planning commissioners about locating the trash compactor along our property line. And I feel this is kind of being glossed over, you know, the planning commission was talking about find a different location. And yet, here we are, back with the trash compactor at the same southerly location. There's also been talk about, you know, I mean, trash compactors, you know, there's a lot of garbage, there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of odor, that's why there's a big concern here. There's been an effort to sort of downplay that, like it's okay, it's all right, just, it's okay, just leave it alone. So, if that's the case, then simply Aimco should move the trash compactor closer to their apartment units and do all the fancy things about noise and all that with their residents. So, if they simply move it off the, you know, southern property line, you know, we would have no issue here. So, thank you very much. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time and good luck.
I have a question for you, Renee. Now, you're with Evergreen.
Yes.
So where, in relationship to your apartments, is your trash facility? Is it a compactor or how is it?
No, we do not have a compactor. There are two, at least dumpsters along that property, you know, along the fence. And then, so that answers your question.
Okay. Have you had any issues with odor from your facilities?
The, no, to answer your question, the issue to us is the amount of it, the amount that's dumped on a daily basis. And the noise of a, noise of a compactor is different than a, you know, every two or three day pickup, you know, which is only, you know, 10 seconds or a minute or two minutes or three minutes, as opposed to a three-hour operation, taking all the garbage from, you know, these roughly 300 units or 1,000 families and dumping them in a particular location.
And how big is Evergreen compared for, you know, facility-wise, unit-wise, compared to the projected 308 units?
We are 190 units to their 310.
Okay.
308.
All right. And how often does your trash get picked up?
Three times a week.
Three times a week? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker, please.
I just, excuse me?
We have another question. I'm sorry, for Evergreen?
Sir?
Brad? We have another question. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just curious, how do your residents get their trash to your garbage dump area?
They carry it themselves.
Okay, so there's not, so I'm, I, just to be clear and kind of equitable, I suppose, you talk about 1,000 families. I think you must, you are really referring to maybe 1,000 people as opposed to...
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, 1,000 people. I stand corrected.
Okay, because I thought, my goodness, where are they going to throw 1,000 families in there? Okay. And then, I understand your concerns about the noise and all those other things. The reports we have, though, the other sites that were looked at, according to the reports we have, every site has an objection to it as far as either it's going to take parking away, which we've already heard from somebody, that they don't, they want more parking, not less, and that either the other two places that I understand from this report that would be okay, would not take parking, however, it would require people to go in a public right-of-way and they would have safety issues with it. So I understand your concerns and I'm sure we're going to discuss it, but with everything that we look at here up in the city council, there's a plus and a minus. Somebody has to give something or somebody else has to give something. So just so it's clear to everybody, there's issues on both sides. So thank you.
I understand. If I might respond to that. From a parking standpoint, the proposed location of, you know, and believe me, I'm no expert on their site plan or what they're doing, but from the site plans I've seen, there would be parking in that location in any event. So if they move it to another spot, all you're doing is trading the two or three spots for the other two or three spots. So parking is not, is not an issue here as far as the trash compactor goes. And so, and as far as the report goes, thank you for bringing that up. Apparently Aimco, after the planning commission commissioned a report. And their own report, you know, talks about major impacts to residents who live near the trash compactor. So their own report talks about that. And again, you know, they picked out five locations, you know, none of us in this room, I would imagine, other than Aimco or maybe staff, knows whether they looked at every single issue. You know, did they, you know, really look to avoid the easement areas or whatnot? So, you know, I just, you know, with 13 acres, you know, there should be, and other than the acre or so that runs along our property line, there should be a location that they could find where, just take, you know, take us out of consideration. This is our only objection. Otherwise, we will support the project.
Through the chair. Just while you're there.
Sure.
I want to tell you that I've read the reports and I was concerned. And I went up to Evergreen last night, drove around, walked around, hopefully no one thought I was trying to take anything, but to try to understand and have an appreciation for what the concerns are. Then I over went to Peninsula Place over here to try to have some kind of a comparison. I know it's, they're two different facilities, but I was trying to understand where the receptacles are located, what the conditions are, whether they're concealed. I know it was 15 feet to 40 feet. I know that they've looked at five options. I know they, on your facility, it does not seem to be, you know, contained. It is open and it is on the property wall next to Treetop. I know that they're trying to limit the time. So as the council member said, it is trying to have a balance and I do have the appreciation for your concern and I'm trying to figure out where we have a happy medium, too, because obviously that's the only objection that Evergreen has at this time with that proposed property. But I think that they have tried to take some steps and look to some options. And I don't know if you have a specific option of where, within the 13 acres you referenced, that would mitigate and not have a problem with the parking, because I think parking is always an issue. And whatever we do up here that takes away parking affects people dramatically for many years to come. So I think that is something that I need a little more assistance, maybe on your end, is exactly where that's not going to, I think some of the steps that they're taking are in the positive and I think they've tried to look at some various options. So that's what I'm trying to understand, too.
Right. You know, from our standpoint, you know, we've only objected to, you know, along the property line. And it's their project, you know, with the influence and approval of the city council. So, you know, our feeling was that, you know, as a good, you know, good neighbor, as corny as that may sound, is that they would find an area on their site, you know, to make it work, you know, because to me, this kind of seems, at the end of the day, kind of a small issue in the big picture, but it's a big deal to our residents and it is permanent. You know, so we do have, you know, we do have to address it. You know, as I say, we've met with them, you know, when I say we, you know, Dale Frost of our company met with Aimco, and we're happy to meet with them to, you know, further figure out an area that works, you know, that doesn't have easement issues or whatnot. But, you know, it does seem to me that they are looking to have it closer to our building than theirs and it is their trash compactor. So anyway, you know, to answer your question, I'm more than happy to, we're more than happy to work with them to try and find a suitable location. You know, we suggested a few, some of which were not included in the report.
All right, thank you.
I just, before you sit down, sir, I just need to find the logic in the argument. They're placing a enclosed confined trash compactor. You can argue whether how, what the noise level is, what smells, the frequency, but they're locating it nearly opposite, on the other side of the fence of your property's open dumpsters. So it, to me, it makes sense to put the garbage all in one spot, whether there's a property line or a fence right in between. You say that there are complaints or there's concerns from the neighbors in that area, but they have, I have a picture right here of two open dumpsters. Not even, they don't even have lids on them. They're not even roofed. So how can you say that there's a concern about, you know, garbage on the property line when your property has it right on the property line and even closer to the building and even more exposed to your residents?
Well, it's a combination of all the above. So, you know, we have, we have noise from a compactor, you know, we've heard about, you know, the new compactors are quieter, but they do create noise. We're talking about, you know, noise on a daily basis of moving the, you know, the two-yard dumpsters, whether they do it by trolley or whether they pull them, you know, there's going to be noise on a daily, on a daily basis versus the pickup of a dumpster that happens every second day or what have you. And there's a short amount of noise. May, actually, it may be louder. I mean, I concede that, but it's a much rarer occasion. And simply, to me, at the end of the day, it's a matter of fairness. I mean, you can say we're wrong, you know, we should accept it, but, you know, there's, you ought to be plenty of areas on that property to find it and then we're done. We go home, you know, and they build the project and we want them to build the project.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and other honorable members of the city council. My name is William Nack. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Samatil County. As a result of our discussions with the developer, we are optimistic that our highly skilled, decently paid construction workers receiving quality health care and pension benefits will be employed to build the Pacific Bay Vista project formerly known as the Treetops project. With unemployment in the construction industry running at 30%, this project could not come at a better time for our members. We're looking forward to working with the general contractor to make this project of the highest quality so the City of San Bruno can look upon it with great pride and I thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public wish to address the city council? All right, this is a public hearing. If we close the public hearing, you're precluded from, do you want to go now or you want to, you want to wait until we close the public hearing? Do you want to make a comment?
I just want to make sure that I didn't miss the opportunity to get back on. So if you want to close the hearing and then invite me back up, that's completely fine.
You'll have an opportunity.
All right.
So if I, we close...
I have good news.
Hurry up and close the public hearing. Right. If you close the public hearing, you're precluded from speaking to the council on this matter again. Action?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. All right. Developer, you have some information for us.
So during the public comment period, Sean Finnegan of Aimco spoke with Rick Andrews on the phone and his belief is that so long as we are able to get recorded access easements similar to the kind that the city would get to maintain and repair the sewer and the water, that it would be okay for the ownership and maintenance obligation to be retained for those utilities by the owner and that the concern about the public roads is that you would have all this public activity here. These really do mostly serve the project and they're underground and we could control them. So he doesn't believe that that will be an off-site obligation that would be a problem for the lender. So that was good news. We would like to encourage the council to ever run the storm drains, which do serve other projects and cover a greater portion of the road. Not that we think they have any problems, but that would be more appropriately retained by the city. So if we can get the roads accepted along the way we've described, we'll do the improvements to the roads, we'll keep the sewers, we'll do all that work and believe we can work out all the other conditions with staff and do hope that the city understands that we can come this far, but would like to not have the past reimbursement of $179,000 remain as a condition. And then I think we have resolution of all the issues.
Thank you. Any comments from staff regarding that statement?
Do we have any, do we have any issues or...
Staff doesn't have any additional comments regarding that suggestion.
Thank you.
During, go ahead. All right, I mean, what is, what is staff's opinion as far as the ownership of the storm drain system?
Yeah, I would say that we need to evaluate that. It has been staff's understanding that all of the utilities served only the Treetop's property, but, so we would have to evaluate that further to be able to give you a clear understanding.
Okay. Under public comment, we did have a couple of comments regarding parking. I'll address these to Aaron and you can address them to whomever you want to. Do we have an issue with parking? Has there been some surveys done? Tell us about the issue up there.
It seems the primary parking issue, from what I understand, is there was, there's been a lot of overspill of Evergreen Ridge residents that park along Elston on the back and access the back of the Evergreen Ridge property as well as parking along Summit and Susan. There, if there was physically location to add additional spaces, you could add additional spaces. There just really isn't room to add additional spaces. They did add a leasing center and with that leasing center, they provided the ample amount of parking that's required for that leasing center. So that is, that is out there and that will serve guests that are coming up to park on the site. So this is, this is actually above the parking requirement that's at Shelter Creek. So it is above that, but it doesn't quite meet today's standards. But there just isn't any physical, they're not adding units. So there's, there's not, and then they're not adding parking spaces, so they're keeping it the same and maintaining as they had before.
Okay. I have had, and the rest of the council have had complaints up in that area about, and, you know, parking, some primarily speeding, too, though. And I just want the public to know that we're trying to address that with the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, to see what we might be able to do to slow people down, because that's a real issue. So, and, you know, the other issue, too, is instead of having one car with one home, now you have three, four sometimes. So it's, it's a difficult situation.
And one condition we did have is that the garage cannot be used as storage.
Right.
So that's something that's worked successfully on other projects. You know, previously, we didn't have, have that condition, so that'll keep the parking open for parking.
Okay.
And regarding speeding, usually when you have a vacant apartment complex and no one in there, you know, leads people to zip through, so hopefully when we do get those units occupied and there's more activity out there, people will slow down.
Okay. The other issue that came up a couple of times is, of course, the compactor and I think we've kind of hashed through that pretty well. It sounds like there's been an awful lot of work and research and study done on where to put this compactor well before it came to the city council. And you have, in fact, addressed another location that was not addressed with the planning commission. Is that correct?
Correct. They will, the, they went over alternative locations in their report that was, that were not addressed with the, with the planning commission. The most, the major change that's happened is this proposal that they have now is, and how we're conditioning this, requiring that the recycling as well as the trash all be in the same location rather than having the recycling only 15 feet away from the apartment buildings as it was proposed at the planning commission meeting.
Okay. Questions of staff?
Through the chair?
Yes, Michael.
Relating back to the mayor, relating back to the mayor's comments and your comments also on the parking, not being able to use the garages for storage and also with the noise issues with the compactor, I'm wondering what mechanism we retain to enforce either a nuisance, and if we approve this and we allow them to go forward with constructing this, they make an investment in it, what, I mean, will we still have a recourse to go back and say, this is not within acceptable limits? And the same with the parking, you know, what mechanism do we use to enforce that nobody's breaking that, that rule?
I'll take the parking one first because that's a little bit easier. You know, we basically, with, with parking type requirements, we enforce them on a complaint basis. So if we got a complaint from a resident on Susan, hey, I've seen these, the garages open and the, you know, that there's, there's storage in there, people can't park there, you know, we would go and have a, we first call the property manager and say, hey, you have to enforce your rules and regulations. If they didn't, then we, of course, we'd have code enforcement follow-up and issue fines if necessary. Regarding the trash compactor, that's a, that's a little bit, that's a little bit more difficult, but if it was exceeding any of our noise requirements within the municipal code that everyone has to apply to, we would have to do something to have them mitigate that. So, you know, you could do things, like let's say it's actual, the compaction, the daily compaction that is exceeding the noise level. You know, perhaps we have them noise insulate the enclosure so that the residents don't have to deal with the noise compaction on a daily basis. I'm sure that just when, when garbage trucks generally go through neighborhoods, they exceed the noise limit. So I think that's going to happen when they're picking up Evergreen Ridge dumpsters or when they're picking up this, this compactor. I think the difference is, you know, we've been talking to recology, instead of being on-site for two hours or three hours, they're only going to be on-site for about 30 or 45 minutes in order to access it. So it's going to be a shorter amount of time when they're there.
Okay, thank you. Renee?
I'm good.
Okay, the last one was from the Building Trades Council regarding union versus whatever the other option is. I think this council's made it very clear of our union support and if there's any way, shape or form that this can be union, I know that the Aimco and I've talked to them in the subcommittee that they're going to really try to make this, make this happen. And so we would encourage that if there's any way possible.
Through the chair, yes, tackle that so we can ensure the highest quality, which is necessary for that project. Something else that was brought up is by Ms. Livinggood was about, is there a homeowners association was one of the questions she raised. And then the, I think there was the concern about the road is another question.
Right, there were a couple of other things. Is there going to be some type of a, you know, yeah, improvement aid? Yeah, improvement aid, some kind of HOA. I know these are leased units or rental units.
Yeah, usually HOAs typically are with condominium associations, or Marisol or Marimont, the two Summer Hill projects, you know, with single-family homes that have an HOA. But what you have here, and according to the applicant statements, you know, you have an onsite property manager, and that would serve the same purpose as the HOA.
Okay. And then what about the... I bet I know the answer to this already, but the clubhouse facilities are for the...
Yeah, those are for, as far as I know, they're private.
Okay. And then the maintenance of Sharp Park Road and the cleanup and the general, that's pretty much in the package, right?
That's in the package, and also if the council wishes to include that additional condition that I stated during my presentation, that they clear the vegetation along the Sharp Park and Susan Drive intersection for site visibility reasons to the satisfaction of the Public Services Director, and they maintain that site visibility to the satisfaction of the Public Services Director. And I think that will help out a lot. Carolyn and I were outside, we were actually there on that intersection yesterday and looking back, and there's a lot of vegetation there right now, and you can't see well. So that will do a lot just to cut down the... Some of the trees, and they're going to replace those trees, but cut down some of the trees that are there, and cut down some of the overgrown vegetation that's there as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff, comment? I'd like to ask the city attorney, based on everything that's transpired this evening, over and above what we knew before we started this, do you have any objection to us this evening adopting the ordinance?
We would need to get a more sense of where the council is going in terms of the project, how you view it as a whole, and the road issue, in order for me to be able to answer that question.
Okay. Well, speaking for myself, we have a few issues here. We have the one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which in fact has been spent. The work has been done. I, for one, don't have a problem with the city taking responsibility for the work that's been done already. I also don't have a responsibility for the city taking responsibility and ownership of the roadway, because it's been pretty much a public roadway historically. I am gratified that the developer is willing to take the responsibility of the utilities. That was a big stumbling block there, and I don't think there's any other major issues, are there?
As Ms. Barkley indicated, we have a number of conditions to just work on, which I'm sure we will endeavor to do very quickly over the next week.
There are more housekeeping issues?
Yeah, and the wording of... And as pertains to the road and the utilities, just the wording of some of those conditions. But I'm quite sure that with the City Council's direction and guidance on these major issues, that we will be able to come to an agreement on those.
Okay. I said my piece. Would somebody else like to chime in? Michael?
So what we're looking at approving is an ordinance that would allow them to have...
Speaking...
We're looking at an ordinance that would allow them to have the two designs. Is that the first thing that we're going to decide? I would have a question regarding how this affects any other projects that might come before us in the future. Does this set a precedent where we would basically be forced to do this for anyone who requested it?
I don't think so, but that is a very good question. To the first part, if you introduce the ordinance this evening, we would wait to adopt the resolutions to the second reading so that we have an opportunity to make sure that our wording is correct. As to your second question, does this set a precedent? I think the council, if it wanted to do so this evening or at the next hearing, could make clear that what has led us to this are very unique and unusual circumstances that speak to this very particular property, and if you're able to do that and to make those findings, I don't believe that it would set a requirement that you aximally in the future.
I, for one, am quite comfortable with having us pay for the one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar sewer repairs that have already taken place, and we've already paid for, so we'll just write that one off as a present to you. The road, keep that in mind. The roadway, I feel strongly that we should accept it. We have been using it as... The rest of the public in the area and the neighborhood has been enjoying the use of that, and even when the whole project has been closed down and the apartments haven't been used and the Aimco, nobody's been benefiting by it, our public has been able to access and go through it. So I think that's a fair thing for us to do. Utilities, however, I understand with the storm drains that connect with the streets and the other things, but I'm sure staff can work that part out. But the underground utilities, sorry, guys, those are yours. The other matters are relatively small, and I'm sure you guys will work those parts out. I'm eager, extremely eager, to have this happen. We've been waiting and waiting. I know the neighborhood's been impacted. I know people who drive by Skyline coming to visit in lower area go, "What is that up there, and why is it there?" And it was there five years ago when I came to see you, and how come it's still there? So I'm eager to have you proceed, and I expect, and I'm sure you will, keep your promises to the quality and excellence that we're all looking forward to.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one suggestion on the one seventy-nine. If it becomes a desire of the council to waive that as to the three hundred and eight-unit project, or... And, excuse me, it's actually a condition on the extension of the five hundred-plus unit. And my suggestion would be, though, that you keep it as a condition to the extent, if they actually build that project, then they pay it. Right now, it's a condition on extending the life of the project, and so you could waive it there, but if they actually ended up dumping the rehab project and going back to the original project, you would probably still want them to pay for it. So just keep... Just clarifying in the record that that... They went back and did the project that...
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, but this is focusing on the current rather than the five hundred and ten. This is the three oh eight. Okay.
Through the chair. I was going to say that. That's okay. It sounded better from you. The one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars was done and has been spent, and that was done for the five hundred and ten, which was the increase. Therefore, if it was going to at any time go, "If this... I know this will work, but what if?" And it goes back, then I would say the one hundred and seventy-nine needs to be paid. No answers for buts, in my opinion. On the roadway use, I think we find fewer folks sitting here tonight than we did some time ago when there was the concept of closing those roadways. We had many residents that came out, wrote, and called because they thought the inconvenience in closing those roads, which was the thought process back at the larger project, brought the residents out. And I think that's why you don't see as many out here this evening, is because in their mind, this project has been brought forward to have those public roadways available to them as it has been for the years. I find that that is of a public interest, and I find that it would be the right thing for us to do, to eventually accept those when they are, as you had said, bought up to speed or as good of a condition quote as we can get. I don't want to see it as good as, or if we can hope, because to me, hope is on plan. I'd like to see a definitive and in writing what those expectations are and what they will be. As far as the utilities, I find that critically important that that become a responsibility the developer and the owner. I think we've learned over the years, I know we go back to long ago, but I think we've all learned over the years what accepting these things, i.e. in Shelter Creek, which is no secret, what that brings to cities, councils, and other items that happen. So that's kind of my piece.
Okay. Mr. Ibera?
Mr. Mayor, less than a week ago, I was not prepared to accept the road, and neither, and especially not with the utilities. So in the last few days, through discussions with staff, I've grown to accept the road and feel comfortable that the improvements that Aimco will have and the projected maintenance in the life of the road will be taken care of. The good news is that you brought the good news about the utilities. I was hard-pressed to vote at all, ever, on taking utilities, responsibility for private I agree with waiving the one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for this rehab project. I'm concerned about maintenance, and a few longtime residents have spoken of that. I think the city needs to deal with, has some work cut out as far as the parking issues in that neighborhood, and it's not all your fault. Maintenance agreement should be... I believe we need to have a maintenance agreement for when this project is complete, so that we have a clear idea of whose responsibility, what to expect in years to come with the landscaping, mainly along the perimeter of this project. It was stated that, you know, it has such a large frontage. So we don't want to have future complaints from residents on Elston, Sharp Park, Skyline, you know, and Susan. So I hope that we'd have some language as far as how that's going to be funded and how it's going to be, you know, maintained in the future. And then there's the, hopefully of the three's the charm, is that we still have to have a maintenance agreement prior to construction. If November first is the, you know, is the date, then so be it, but I want this project to go through like the rest of us and what the neighbors want. But you can't guarantee it. No one can guarantee it, and if it doesn't, then we have to have something in place. So I hope that that's, you know, taken care of. And with that, I'm very pleased with the improvements, and very pleased with, you know, to the extent that you're going to rehabilitate this project. I mean, you're practically... It's practically brand-new. So new landscaping, practically new buildings, and so I hope you get your funding.
Does that mean you'd like to introduce the ordinance? Or, Michael, you have something else?
One last comment.
One last thing. Go ahead.
I guess I'm a little less enthusiastic about the proposal, because we were expecting something a lot bigger, and I realize that doing something is better than doing nothing. But I don't know, I guess almost-new is not quite-new, and we did hear that some foundation work is going to be not quite up to standards. A lot of the original framing, some plywood is going to remain. I know mold was a big concern there, and those are natural fibers, and mold likes to live in there. And so I would have a question from staff regarding our ability to adequately inspect what's going to remain and provide some level of confidence to the future residents of those apartments that we're not going to have another mold problem. I mean, just because you replaced a few pieces, I mean, how sure can we be? Also, I know, as I was looking through all the details of the conditions, the conditions are not the same for a renovation as they would be for a new construction. And I know some of those things we just can't enforce on a project that's not a new construction. So again, what guarantee can we give people that they are going to be somewhere that's safe, that has the same concerns for public safety and for environmental safety that they would have the other way? Can you address that?
Definitely. Regarding the building code issues, this property will be built up to code. It's a difference of will they be meeting the exact way that the 2007 code specifies you have to meet. The building code also gives the building official the responsibility to have them meet the code through alternative means and methods. So although it might not be the exact prescribed way to build a foundation, they would strengthen the foundation in a way that it gives it the same strength as the letter of the code would. So it will be to 2007 code. It's just you have to, you know, you have to be... You have to work in a different way when you're dealing with a renovation project. Another thing that we'll do is if they propose to keep a two-by... Let's say they propose to keep a two-by-four in there that's been there before. When our inspectors up there, if they notice that that two-by-four has too many nail holes in it, which makes the strength not up to what the strength has to be, they're going to have to remove that. There are, you know, we are taking in a... I think I've mentioned it in the budget hearing, that, you know, our building inspectors are up there on a daily basis, and they're going to be looking at each aspect of it. If the plywood is moldy, or if the plywood is weathered to the point it doesn't create the same strength as it should, the plywood will have to be removed and replaced with new plywood. We'll also work with county health to ensure that their mold remediation plan is completely in effect, and I know that Aimco is working towards the same thing, because it's a huge liability issue if there were to have any mold remaining in the units. But we have been working with county health. The buildings will meet 2007 code just through alternative means. Oh, yeah, okay. And the second issue is, the architect made a comment that they are making upgrades to the buildings in terms of accessibility, ADA accessibility. When a renovation project happens for a building that was originally constructed prior to 1991, that building code... That building does not have to meet all ADA requirements. However, since they are receiving some of their funding through HUD, HUD encouraged them to have some accessible units. So they're actually going up and beyond what the current code requires in terms of accessibility for ADA issues.
Okay. Anything else? Any action by the council?
I'm sorry.
City Attorney?
If I could make one more suggestion. Following up on Councilmember Salazar's concern about whether this sets a precedent, I would suggest that we... That the ordinance be amended before the introduction, and I can make sure the correct verbiage is in there for the second reading, that really lays out how this is a unique and unusual property and project, and it's due to these unusual circumstances that you're allowing the dual zoning to go forward, and that it should not set a precedent for other applications on this property or elsewhere. So with that, if you introduce the ordinance, I would suggest it be made with that amendment.
Did we also want to include as far as the clearing of the vegetation, as well as the noise of the compactor?
Condition of approval.
Conditions?
Through the chair, those will actually be in the resolutions, but we've heard... So we'll bring those back. The amended language that Pamela just mentioned will actually be in the ordinance itself.
Okay. Action by the council?
I'll do it. I'd like to waive the first reading. Make a motion and waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion second to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to introduce the ordinance with the unique mix clause and...
And the condition of approval.
And the conditions of approvals that were stated and that staff will be implementing. Introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Okay, we'll bring this back on the twenty-second, the second reading, and the introduction of the resolutions. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to take a two-minute break?
We're going to take a two-minute break now. Return in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
What about the, what about the tape when he came up with the dinosaur?
I didn't, I don't see that.
I'd like to call the city council meeting back to order. We do have one more public hearing, item eight-B. Hold the public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2010-11, establishing fees for municipal services.
Let you go out there and read public.
Staff, please.
Good evening, this is Mayor, and Council. The master fee schedule sets for the fees that the city may recover for cost incurred to provide services requested by members of the community. These fees are developed using cost allocations that will be a couple of years ago.
Sorry. Thank you. Annual, each, each city department reviews its respective user fees, and determines if adjustments are warranted for recovery of its costs to provide the services for which the fee is charged. Several adjustments are recommended for the upcoming 2010-11 fiscal year. San Bruno Cable is looking for an adjustment for its local origination fee, for recovery of its programming costs. So, that's recommended to increase to $1.90 per subscriber per month. In the community's development department, a fee has been added for residential design guideline reviews. And in the public services department, there is a modification for the special parking restriction, design, and public approval process fee to $221 an hour. That's, this reflects restructure of the personnel that's involved in performing the services. Similarly, the public services hourly rate has been adjusted to reflect the restructure personnel involved in performing the services. And then finally, in the community services department, there are a number of changes. Facility rental rates are standardized to hourly rates, and where applicable, there are separate facility attendant costs associated with different types of rentals. This would be for rentals of the gym, for instance, conference rooms and/or meeting Rental rates have also been added for the senior center conference room and the community room in the rec center. Non-residential rental rates are also standardized at 25% above what the San Bruno residents are paying for rentals. This includes all the indoor facilities, the picnic facilities, and the city pool. The city pool also has now hourly rates associated with lifeguard charges where applicable, and also for lane rentals and the use of the small pool. And finally, promotional discounts and incentives, as they are authorized by the Park and Rec Commission, are now identifying the master fee schedule. This is actually a longstanding practice, but it's now being memorialized in the master fee schedule. This is a public hearing, so staff recommends that you take public comment, and obviously we're available to answer any questions that the city council has.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
I say we open the public hearing.
All right.
I've got a question of staff.
Yes.
Through the chair. Regarding the residential design review fee.
Yes.
Is that only if the projects do not go through any special approvals? The design review fee is, all projects are going to be reviewed as a design review. There is a, a fee for, you know, for, for a special approval?
Correct. If it already went through design review through the planning commission process or through the architecture review process, yes, we would not apply that fee.
Okay.
Through, through the chair, I guess, to ask my questions. A few questions. When we, under the parks and rec categories, I just want some clarification and some information. Were these prices at all gone over, or this proposal gone over with the park and recreation commission and the senior advisory board?
Both the park and rec commission and the senior advisory board, the senior advisory board just for the prices here at the senior center, park and rec commission for all of the prices within chapter nine.
So, they're going over, they voted and concurred with these?
They did, and their recommendation was to approve these changes.
Okay, then, just to help me better understand, I looked under gymnasium, and I, if I'm reading this right, it was 95 an hour for a resident, am I, am I seeing that right? Resident and San Bruno nonprofit, and now it is $100 an hour?
That is correct.
Proposed.
Right, that is-
Do, and we believe the market is bearing that an increase of $100 an hour for a resident trying to have a pickup game or something in the gymnasium?
Correct.
Okay. And could you help me in define when it says, you know, for example, a full meeting room, and it says direct costs? Define what direct costs means.
If staff needs to be brought in, building attendant, if there is, we can approximate the, the usage of the utilities there, the, the, those are the fees that would be charged to the San Bruno Park School District. Really, if there's just any cost that the city would incur solely because of the use of, of, from the district's use, those would get passed on.
Okay. And I, maybe it's just me and I'm not adding well here, but I looked at, the full meeting room was 250 for the four, first four hours for residents, priority four, and now it's proposed, Ed, is that, am I reading this right? Is it 53 or 63 dollars an hour?
63.
63, so is that, does that equate as, as to an increase?
That's, it, it's just rounded up.
And I know in the picnic sites, who took the, the decrease was group five, so your non-residents. So, for example, Beckner where I was at this weekend, it was $600, now it's proposed at 375. A resident was at 300, is proposed at 300. So, the difference is 75 dollars, just giving an example of Beckner Shelter, the largest facility we have in the park. I know it's a 25%, as the finance director said. Does that seem enough of a disparity? Is it because, what, what I'm seeing is the resident, the non-resident receiving a great discount, and I'm seeing that the resident is not, is just getting closer to the resident rate. That's my concern.
What we were finding was the non-residents, that no non-residents were renting the facility because of the, the much higher cost. We still would be giving a preference to San Bruno residents so that they have an opportunity to rent the facility before non-residents. In fact, we were going to extend it so that through a practice of, of up to 11 months. So, here we are in, on June 8th, you can rent the facility up until next May. For non-residents, we will shorten that timeframe to make sure that residents get an opportunity first. But if the facility is there, we would still hope that we can rent it out and generate some positive revenues for the city. At the existing rate, it's just proven to be too high, and we're getting very few rentals.
And then, one final point is that under the senior center assembly room, where I think it's a, a good thing, is that the rates have gone down for the San Bruno Park School District programs and events, as well as our San Bruno-based organizations, and I think that's been a, when I've been here at events, that they've brought up that it's harder to obviously raise the funds and try to have it go back to the community when in essence the rates were at a level that was not making it economically feasible for them to be here, and they would seek other opportunities like down the road or somewhere to hold their events.
Well, it's still six-hour minimum. Still 600 bucks.
What's still?
No. No. Up for two.
All right. Any questions?
Michael?
I'm the chair. One concern, whenever we talk about changing fees, is, you know, are we, are we going to drive away any of our customers? And I'm wondering, it certainly says here, full cost recovery is the goal, and we certainly, that certainly is important. We do want to, want to break even at the end of the day. But I'm wondering if you did mention that you're, you're getting less out-of-city people renting because of the high cost that's being adjusted. Do we have any data on how elastic the demand is for some of these services and whether the price is actually going to impact how many people we, we get to use the services?
We can pull together information on how many rentals-
Okay.
-were done in the previous year. When you're saying the cost, I'm not sure if you were referring to, as Vice Mayor Medina was referring to Beckner Shelter specifically, if that's what your reference was also.
It's actually more general, and I'm just wondering, as we go through the planning process, you know, how much consideration do we give that maybe adjusting a fee could be a huge turnoff to the public? And if, if, I'm just actually more curious if we actually compile or even have access to any data that would tell us, you know, at this price, so many people were interested, now that it's gone up, are more people interested or less people interested? What does that actually do? Because, I mean, clearly to get to that break-even point, it's not just the fee, but how many people are willing to pay the fee. So, that's kind of the other component of it. I'm just wondering, do we have that information, and if so, has it been reflected in, in the fees?
I, I have not compiled that information specifically for any of the departments, and I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the director, but I believe the director has surveyed other cities in terms of pricing.
We have surveyed other, other cities for some of the facilities to see what is applicable. We do have collection reports to show in the various rental areas what has been done historically in the past. Obviously, it would be very difficult to find out when people, the reason why people did not contact us if they saw the fee and thought that was too high. But I would point out, most of the fee changes in here are, are process-oriented rather than a raising of the fees. There's very few fees in here that were increased. As Vice Mayor Medina was pointing out, the one that was, is now 63 dollars an hour, before it was 250 dollars for four hours, we're finding that people didn't want to rent it in a four-hour block. People are asking about three hours, and within the fee structure, there's really, we're trying to stay within the fee structure. So, to do that, making it as an hourly cost, what we did is then just rounded it to the nearest highest dollar level, so that we're not dealing with quarters and 50 cents values in here. So, it was not really an increase in the fees, just changing the process to make it easier for both the, the public that wants to rent the fees, as well as staff in how to apply the fees.
Understood. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Mr. Ibera?
Oh.
Mary?
Okay, thank you. Randy, on page 36, where you have the new service groups and the senior center assembly room, just so I'm clear, you have 38 dollars, you have zero, direct cost 38 dollars. So, 38 dollars, and you also say minimum, six-hour minimum rental. So, is that-
The six-hour minimum rental would be for the outside groups. Yes.
Okay, so, group three, therefore, that is San Bruno-based nonprofit, if they only wanted to rent it for three hours, they could only rent, they only, they're allowed to just rent it for three hours?
Well, one of the, the thoughts that the senior advisory board, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission discussed, was this is one of the premier indoor facilities that we have, and to rent it out for a short duration might be lessening the revenue opportunity of a group that's coming in later on for a longer rental. The thought was, most of the time, people are renting this out for wedding receptions, birthday parties, something where it's going to need typically one hour of setup time, four hours of the event, and then an hour for teardown, to take away the decorations, et cetera. So, that's how the six hours was derived.
Okay, and if my math's right, because you have the old set down here, it's 653 dollars, so six times 38 is 228 dollars. So, it is a substantial savings for the nonprofit groups.
The, the groups, the, both of the commission, the senior commission and the park and rec commission, did feel as though we needed to lower some of the costs to make it more attractive, but a lot of people were not renting the facility because it was so high-priced.
Oh, I, I, yes, I concur. I, I have always thought that, so I think that's a great-
I do want to point out that in very small type at the bottom of the page, it does show that the facility attendant costs, the 15 dollars per hour, are not included in groups one, two, and three. And so, that would be added on to the cost. So, if somebody was coming in at 38 dollars an hour, on top of that would be the attendant costs, depending on the amount of time that, that staff is needed here to handle the setup, watch the building, and handle all the ancillary duties during the event, as well as the teardown afterwards.
Can I ask, why would you not want to just incorporate it into the price, so you're not saying, well, it's 63, plus it's 15 times this, to make it more user-friendly? Why would we not just clump it together in one price, since we, we review this annually, and we could obviously change it if there was an increase into the salary of the part-time staff?
I think we can do that for most of the events. Some of them, the setup is going to be much more extensive, and there's going to be a lot more time that's needed beforehand, two or three hours of staff time beforehand rather than just, I think for a typical wedding reception, the typical birthday party, where it's roughly 150 people, I think we can show that to the, to the customer who's coming into the center to, to rent the facility.
Through the chair?
Yes, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. When, when we, since this is going to be a new service, right, or new setup-
People have been able to rent the senior center in the past.
So, how, how come it's listed under, under new service?
No, that's for above.
The new service is for the community room up on top.
Oh, above, I'm sorry.
And there was never a fee that was associated with rental of the community room at the rec center, so that one's a new.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just hope we're clear, I'm with Mr. Medina, that people don't get this 15-dollar per hour additional fee, that it's a surprise to them as they're looking at this, that we're clear when we advertise that this is what it is.
Which is on the fine print.
Yeah.
People don't like that.
That the print is a little bigger, and it's more directly associated with the cost. Because even, even with that, it's still only 318 dollars, which is still a bargain, so. I just want to make that clear. I think the rest of it's fine.
I'd like to stay, I'd like to stay in this building and this discussion in this building, because when I mentioned during the budget session, I said, you know, I, I saw the survey of facilities in the county, and, you know, there were comparable rental rates. However, there were facilities that allow use of the kitchen, full use of the kitchen. And so, I mean, that has been a bone of contention with groups that I've been dealing with, is that there is no, they're not allowed to use the kitchen. And that is a big hindrance in renting this place, because you either have to bring the food in, or you have to hire a caterer. You can't, you know, do a, you can't cook here. Basically, you, you're not allowed to cook in, in this facility. So, I don't know where we go with that. I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there, and I know there are very, you know, strong reasons why we don't, but it hasn't been discussed, you know, in, you know, with this body, and I don't know how, how much it's been discussed with the, you know, park and rec commission. So, that said my piece. And as far as rental rates, is Beck, is Beckner Shelter booked solid during the, the peak season?
During the peak season, it generally is, yes.
So, because-
Weekends, I'm not, I would not say that.
Yes, and that's, that's what I, I mean, because during the peak season, I believe, you, you have to rent it, even seven days a week, I believe, or is it just the weekends?
You can rent it up to seven days a week.
Okay.
But I don't believe that there's- But I don't believe that there's that many rentals on weekdays. And if there is a facility that hasn't been rented out, then it becomes a drop-in, first-come, first-served facility.
Say again?
If there's a picnic area that nobody has rented out, you can then just go use it, but you don't, you don't, you're not able to reserve it ahead of time. It's still a park facility, so you can just...
So is it true, is it true that used to, during the off-peak season, there was no, there was, there was no collection of fees for Beckner Shelter? That it was just show-up? You can just, first-come, first-served?
I'm sorry, that I cannot answer. I don't know the history of that.
And is, and how do you, how do we justify the three-hundred-dollar charge? Is that just the, what the, what the market demands?
What the market would bear as well as comparisons with other similar picnic sites that were surveyed.
Okay.
Hello? Actually, I think the discussion, I was trying to figure out what exactly it was, the point that Mr. Ibera brought up about using the kitchen. I would like to see that explored. Maybe it's an added fee if you use the kitchen for cooking and then that money is separated and put aside for any equipment replacement or something like that because it's a huge deal not to be able to use the kitchen. And I know that there are groups that would use this place if they could use the kitchen. So...
If I can elaborate a little bit on that, that was probably the largest point of discussion with both the senior advisory board and the Park and Rec Commission. And senior advisory board looks at, what's the difference between this facility and the others that were on the survey that you all had in the packet? And that's really that this is, is one of the only ones, or one of the only two, maybe, that cooks on a regular basis. That we serve a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty meals here on a daily basis out of that kitchen. Where most of the other facilities are rental halls, they do not do regular food service. And the Park and Rec Commission, in their recommendation to the city council, after much discussion, they finally agreed that maybe we should not be using the kitchen for rentals or for cooking purposes. There's storage space in terms of the refrigerator and the freezer. However, if council wishes, we can definitely go back and look at the kitchen use as well as other options.
Through the chair, I'm going to go into history here. When this facility opened in nineteen eighty-seven, I was, one of my tasks when I worked here was renting this out. I worked the very first wedding reception we had out of this facility in August of nineteen eighty-seven. And back then, you were able to utilize the kitchen. So it was used. The difference, I think, that has to be wrestled with is that you had the county supplying the foods. So it was delivered here on-site, it was brought in. As far as storage was concerned in the facility, in the kitchen, there would be space made available in the refrigerator-freezer section and steam tables and other items that could be utilized. And then over the years, it then became changed. I know now that they're doing a lot of cooking internally here on location, not going through the county, so now storage is more of a concern. Whether you had an additional freezer unit or refrigeration unit outside the door and enclose it, because there's already an enclosure there to gain access so that they could utilize that. But I do think that is something that I hear when I'm at these events, is that basically they have to cater it in, which is expensive, have it already precooked, which means it gets dry, or utilize the steam table as a bar service area. That's basically what they can, and that is something that does come up frequently. So there is a uniqueness of this facility and what it provides and what is done out of there. So I don't know how that can be dealt with or wrestled with, but I think that is something that we should explore because I think others would ask for it. And I think the market would bear that this is, that is an issue that turns away some of our folks. The other thing I'm wondering, too, is how the rentals are doing. For example, if we want to take the, in a calendar year, do we have, we have, we'll say fifty weekends, fifty Saturdays in a year. Do we rent out half currently? Do we rent out twenty-five? How many do we rent out in a year?
Of this facility?
Just this facility.
Very few. I don't have a specific number, but private rentals is a handful, three or four per year. To nonprofit groups, it's probably one to two dozen.
Right. And again, I want to live in the past, though. I was only twelve at the time. But it is true that we, I remember this facility, and so many years of it, we rented it out for the, you know, and I worked with that with the city and with Wendy Mines, was that it was busy every weekend. We had part-time staff coming up, rearranging tables and chairs, we had attendants. It went hours and hours. There was a different rate structure, of course, and that was then, this is now. But I will tell you that it was rented minimally every other weekend without fail or exception. And sometimes it was challenging. That's why I questioned the gym rental, because thinking back to the gym rental days when I was there, we had Tuesday nights, Thursday nights, after-open gym, Saturdays, Sundays, leagues, tournaments. It was so hard for me to even get part-time staff to get there because of the hours and they were folks that were in college and sort of they had things they wanted to do, too. And I don't know if we're still having that type of participation. And that's why I raised the concern of the price for the gymnasium. And then I come back to this facility, I think we are missing the opportunity for some revenue.
Any other questions? Comments?
Well, I'd like to make it either a motion or a definitive statement to staff to go back and look at different configurations or different options to increase use of, or allow for cooking and for storage if we have to get another unit and any, and add a different fee structure to that. So if someone wants to cook, they have to pay, I don't know what, an extra hundred dollars or whatever it would be. And then to alleviate problems with any, any perceived problems with people cooking in there, that money could be earmarked for the kitchen area. It just, I think, I'm with Mr. Medina, I think it would be a much more attractive facility to rent out much more often. When Mr. Ruane and I first got on, that was one of the very first things we looked at was why did the rental of this, the senior center have a drastic decline? And that was one of the reasons we were told that people were no longer allowed to use the kitchen. So I would like us, I'd like that to come back to us.
Okay. Why don't we do this as a matter of formality, open a public hearing? Any members of the public push to speak? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close?
So move to close?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Council, discussion, action?
I'm prepared to approve majority of the proposals. I think most of our discussion was based on chapter nine, and I'm, I'm not happy with passing certain things in chapter nine. So I'd be happy to introduce a resolution without chapter nine, if that was the case. And I'm going to do that. Introduce a resolution to approve the recommended master fee schedule excluding chapter-nine parks and recreation. With the proviso that the committees and staff will take those issues into consideration and come back with some, some discussion or alternatives.
If I could just ask for clarification before the council votes. We clearly heard from several, several council members the interest in additional review and further discussion by the city council on the issue of rental of the senior center kitchen and rental of the senior center overall. We heard your additional comments and made note of them, but I think staff would appreciate clarification about the particular issues that you would like brought back, other than the senior center ones that I just mentioned.
I guess, I guess I can, I guess we could be more, I think my, my motion could be more specific, that approve the master fee schedule excluding the rental of the senior center, assembly room and kitchen.
I can do, I can do that.
And the only thing I would, I would ask is that, just for user-friendly, when we're saying direct cost, can there be something that says what that is? Because to you and I, we may know what it is. To the average person or the user group or the PTA council, they may not know what that means in then trying to budget the event. And I, and I also go back to what Councilwoman O'Connell and I said, is just, you have it way down here about this doesn't include this. And, and it just concerns me because I think as far as the building attendant, and I think that needs to be incorporated. If we're reviewing it annually, I don't know why we need it as a footnote way down as an asterisk at the bottom of the page. I just don't feel it's user-friendly.
At least add it up there.
Yeah. If you want to add it to the sidebar or something up, but up top, to where it's, it's obvious.
May I?
I read.
Okay. I understand why you separate out the cost because there might be an additional cost if you need more attendance time than the six hours. I can understand that. But I just, I feel, as Mr. Medina does, that it should be up with the others' costs. So it's just clearer, it's fairer for the residents.
If I could just add to the, for clarification purposes, this presentation is unique to the master fee schedule, which is probably not the document that the majority of our facility rental customers are looking for fee schedule information. We will make the change that you've asked for to move it up and make it more clear. In this document, we will also make sure that it is adequately clear and available for people to see on the documents that are circulated through the recreation offices.
She's right.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So is staff clear in the introduction of the resolution, what it includes and what it does not include?
Yeah, let me just restate that to make sure that we're clear. The motion made by Councilmember Ibera would approve the fees as have been presented with the exception of the senior center kitchen and assembly room rentals rates. Or is it the whole of the senior center facility?
No, just this...
The main assembly room.
Assembly, main assembly room.
And the kitchen. And we will bring those back. I'm assuming it's the council's pleasure that you would consider those fees in coordination with your discussion about use of the senior center kitchen?
Correct.
Is that the intent?
Yes. Okay.
Aye.
City clerk?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. No one from the public here this evening, so we'll go on to item ten, conduct of business. The first item is to authorize fireworks stand permits for 2010 upon finding that the nonprofit organizations meet requirements of resolution 2008-59 and ordinance number seventeen.
Honorable mayor and council, I met with the subcommittee for the fireworks and at that time I have, I presented eighteen groups who have applied for fireworks permit. And all of them met the requirements. And last night, all eighteen groups attended a safety seminar by, put on by the police, the fire, myself and our finance director. So I'm here, and what's going to happen are the booths are going to open on the twenty-eighth and they'll go through July fourth. And we have three more groups this year than we had last year. Eighteen's the maximum we can have, and that's what we've got. So I would be glad to entertain any questions you might have about this.
Any questions of the clerk or any action?
Go ahead, I read. Do you have a motion?
I'll introduce resolution.
Motion.
Do you need a motion first?
Yeah, motion is all. Motion to authorize.
I'll second that.
It is a motion.
I'll second the council members.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor to authorize the fireworks stand permits. There's a second?
Second.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Flowers Electric and Service Company, Inc., for the SCADA for wastewater facilities project in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and approving construction budget in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. Staff, please.
Honorable mayor, council members, good evening. This is a very important project for the better management of the city's sewer system. After the implementation of this project...
Too late in night. I just said, "Good evening, honorable mayor and council members."
It's always nice to say the second time, just in case.
It sounds much nicer the second time.
Absolutely.
This is a very important project for the city. After the implementation of this project, the department will be able to remotely monitor our five neighborhood pump stations. The intent of the project includes only does the five neighborhood pump station with the assumption that our Olympic pump station will be decommissioned in the next one or two years. And for some reason, that intent will not come true, then is, the city will have the capability to add later on the Olympic pump station to the control, to the control system. The department bid this project and received three proposal for the project. The lowest bidder was Flower Electric and Service Company. They have a very extensive experience in the implementation of this type of project. Actually, they implemented our SCADA system for our water system also. The city always was pleased with the services and the quality of services provided by Flowers Electric. They are providing right now, service, they are providing electrical services for our streetlight system. And the city and the department is very pleased with the quality of their services. Reason why I feel very comfortable to make the recommendation to award the contract to Flower Electric and Service Company and also to ask your approval for a construction project of one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, which mean a fifteen percent contingency to the award of the construction contract. In our budget, in our budget for this year, is included a total of three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand. Looks at this time that this project probably will see around one-hundred-thousand savings at the end of the project implementation. The duration of the, of the implementation of the project is around two-hundred working days due to long time period needed for the testing of the system itself. If you have any question.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. So Clara, this is basically just the equipment and connecting it, wiring it.
Absolutely.
And testing.
Absolutely.
So I'm just curious, and I guess the labor, the labor was the, was the deciding factor in this? From a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand to two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand? That was, that was the determination? I mean, if the equipment's the same, then it's a matter of what, what it entails to connect?
Was a lots of discussion internally, what really is the main difference between, you say reasonable difference between the lower bidder and the next bidder. Our assumption is, is not really the labor, but maybe Flowers knowing and understanding our system much better than anybody else, working with our system for a few years now. Our assumption is that the understanding of our system and their assumption that they will be able, knowing the system, that they will be able to implement in a much more efficient manner. That is our assumption.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or action?
Through the chair.
Michael?
It seems as though the original estimate from staff was probably closer to the higher estimate. And I'm wondering, when the bids come in, do they have a lot of detail associated with them where you can actually tell what, what's different? And are you able then to compare that back to your estimate and decide if something is significantly different in the bids?
That internal analysis was conducted and based on our assessment, our comfort level is very high, that they will be able to deliver the project for this cost. It's just the bidding environment is so different today that actually for any... just the bidding environment is so different today that actually for any other project, and not just us, but other agencies and everybody, they are receiving surprising bid proposal depend on each contractor interest and financial situation and this given time.
Okay. And one other, just to sort of elaborate, I understand the value of the system, but just to more quantify it for the public, can you sort of address what the real benefits are of the system? I understand you'll be able to track it remotely, but how does that translate into faster reaction times, savings on fuel and staff time to travel to different locations? Just kind of touch on those, just for everyone's benefit?
Councilmember Salazar, all of the above, what you just mentioned, that basically you will be able to monitor actually 24-hour a day on ongoing basis and at a centralized location without the need to go out to those sites and to verify the functionality of the pump and the wet wells. In addition, will give us timely signals if any problem will develop with any of our pumps. And hopefully, will, in time, will improve our response time to prevent any major failure of any of our pumps, to prevent any sewer overflow or even in a high wet peak flow situation during storms, if any of our pump station is getting closer to the capacity or getting even closer to the capacity of that station, that really remotely the department will be able to be alerted to and basically to take much more, much faster actions to prevent any sewer overflow.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we've had SCADA system on the wells for some time now, right? About ten years?
Councilmember Ibera, I am not sure exactly in what year was implemented SCADA for water. I know that five years ago, six years ago, Connie, if you remember, if I recall, five or six years ago in that kind of timeframe was implemented for water. And certainly is the benefit of the SCADA system for the water is undebatable. And actually, I don't think too many agencies manage their sewer or water system without a SCADA system. This is a very basic need for the proper management of the sewer and water system.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I did, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract with West Coast Arborist to perform an inventory on trees maintained by the city. Staff report, please.
I'll do it both ways. Oh, that's a better way. This item before you tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute an $18,000 contract with West Coast Arborist to perform an inventory of city-maintained parks trees, street trees, trees in open space areas that are adjacent to homes or other structures. In addition, West Coast Arborist will provide a tree management software and the training of the software to the parks division. This inventory would include such items, and there's a much more full list in your packet, but some of the items that they would be on the inventory would be tree location, the presence of utility lines, the width of the planting strips, vacant street tree planting sites, the size and condition of the trees, and recommended maintenance requirements for each species. Having this inventory will allow staff to capture maintenance history on each tree to better understand maintenance needs and workloads, to reduce the city's liability and improve the health of our urban forest, as well as encouraging planting of other trees throughout the city. Funds for the inventory will be coming from a grant from ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. The grant funds can only be used for outside consultant purposes performing risk management related tasks. And one of the conditions of the grant is that the work needs to be completed by the end of June. West Coast Arborist was selected as the vendor after considering proposals from many different qualified vendors. West Coast Arborist was, is being recommended because they are supplying the best price, the best collection of data and software training. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or action?
Just really quick, I was, was there anything like this in your prior position in another city? Have you had any experience with this type of?
This type of thing, never this vendor before, but more and more these trees system, these tree management systems are the industry, becoming the industry standard. West Coast Arborist has over 125 cities that they are working with. The one I'm familiar with was done by one of the competitors that we did examine, we did contact them for their information, but it seems as though West Coast Arborist is providing a better product.
And this is a basic, user-friendly program that staff can, because obviously there's limited time for phone training as well as on training. So, and then that expires, and I bet you that would cost after that period. But you, from what you're hearing, this is pretty easy to gain the information and utilize it and train others?
It is. And it's one of the things, if I can just elaborate for one second, it's knowing that staff time right now is even more precious than before.
That's what I was worried about.
Every tree that is maintained, instead of having to click on each tree and say the maintenance was done, if it's just trimming and they did, you know, two or three blocks at a time, you can put all that information with one click. You can bulk all of the trees within that region if they were all done and upload it. So they've got lots of systems in there to speed up the process and save staff time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Michael.
So I'm clear on what this resolution would include. It includes the conducting of the initial inventory, and with that we get one year's use of the software. But we're not at this time approving any future payments of 2,400. That would be the annual fee going forward.
That is correct. That would be, that would be part of the division budget request each year, although the city will own the data. And any data that is collected during the year, that we will be able to keep. If we choose not to move forward with the maintenance contract on the software system, we would be able to stop that any year.
Okay, so we would own the data, but access to the system then would just, that would cease at that time?
Correct.
Okay. And you anticipate that on a going forward basis, that there would be some significant value to having our data on that system versus just maintaining it some other way?
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't. I don't think we maintain it any other way.
We don't have it.
We don't have anything, right?
We have something.
Oh, we have, yeah. Street trees mainly.
We have, we have many of the street trees. Most of the street trees are on an Excel spreadsheet, but they do not, they do not list the conditions of the trees. Some include the species, some do not. They, we don't have long-term maintenance records and history of them. So this will give us a much better starting place.
Action?
Resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Ten D, receive staff report on changes to the operation of the youth sports programs during fiscal year 2010/11.
Thank you. This, the purpose of this item is to provide information to the city council regarding a restructuring of the community's after-school sports programs. This new collaborative with the San Bruno Park School District will have benefits to the city, the district, and will provide a much higher level of service to the public. Representatives from the district approached city staff last year with a request for city staff to take over the operation of the after-school sports programs at Parkside Intermediate School. Under a city's operation, the students will still be competing against other middle schools in the north coast, or north county recreation league in sports such as basketball, volleyball, flag football, track, cross-country, et cetera. The benefits, though, of a city operation will be increased participation, as we will allow all registered participants to be placed on teams. Currently, the school has a finite number of spaces they can open due to, due to mainly coaching availability. And this would be more consistent with the other schools, with our neighboring cities that our students would be competing against, where all students have an opportunity to be placed onto a team. Another benefit, we believe, to the program is similar, again, to our neighboring cities, sixth graders would be competing against the other schools. As sixth grade in San Bruno is still part of the elementary school, we are the only sixth grade, we'll only say where sixth graders are not competing against other schools. And we think this will be new, exciting for them, and we again expect increased participation. Preliminary discussions with the school administrators led to the list of responsibilities that is in your packet, but two that I do want to point out that were among the items that were discussed, that the city's operation would be on a year-to-year basis, and the city could opt out and turn the operation back over to the district at any point, or more, at any, at the end of any school year. And that no city general funds would be needed to subsidize the program at any point. So a lot of the items that are in the packet there that the school is still responsible for are designed to make sure that the city would not have to subsidize the after-school sports program. With the changes to the middle school program, one of the things that it opens up is the elementary school program. We will now be having it as second through fifth graders rather than third through sixth graders. There's a lot of second graders that want to participate in the program. They tried to sign up for it, and we have not allowed them to at this point. What we would be doing next year is having second and third graders in an instructional league. It'd be more akin to a recreation class than a competitive program. We know that they're already competing in soccer as an example, and they're starting to do basketball, or baseball activities, T-ball, and those types of things. But it's really the first time that second, third graders are working with basketball, with flag football, with volleyball. So those would be done as a class more than as a competitive league. The fourth and fifth graders, they would be getting, be having an introduction to a competitive program. Similar to the program that was done by the department in past years, we would be having practices on district campuses rather than having somebody pick the children up and bring them to city park for a one-hour practice. We think it would be, it would be much more convenient to the parents or caregivers of the children to be able to leave them on campus in a healthy, safe, supervised setting until 4:00 PM rather than picking them up at 3:00 PM, bringing them to city park, waiting for an hour practice, and then taking them home. So again, we expect much more in the ways of, the way of participation under this structure. Another benefit of moving the practices to the elementary school campuses is, as we discussed a few minutes ago, it would free up the gymnasium use so that some of those other groups can rent it out. And there, we do get requests on an annual basis from St. Roberts, from Highlands, from some of the sports clubs that are looking for more gymnasium space. So we would be able to have the second through fifth grade programs on school campuses, making it more convenient for the parents. At the same time, it would open up the gym space, so we believe that we are looking at approximately $1,000 per week of new revenue during the peak season of the volleyball, basketball activities. This proposal was reviewed by a committee of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it was discussed by a committee meeting of the city council, school board members. And input has been put into this proposal. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
I've got a couple of questions. So Parkside School will not be a representative. It will be San Bruno youth, youth program, youth league?
It would be open to any, any sixth through eighth grade student within San Bruno. And that's a little bit of a switch now. Right now, it's only open to Parkside students. If a student is homeschooled or they're attending a school that does not have an after-school sports program, we would allow them to compete here. Whether we call the team a Parkside, which is what we do, but we would have logos of both the city and the district on uniforms to indicate to parents and players that it is a partnership. There would be a financial stake in the program from the district as well as from the city through the fees that we are collecting.
Which begs the question, I mean, what are the, what are the people from St. Roberts say? Because I know they still belong to a league and will, they'll have the option of being within that league and also in this new San Bruno league.
They would, the St. Roberts students would be eligible to compete on the Parkside team. However, they are not allowed under PPSL rules to compete in both. If the student competes for St. Roberts and the league that they participate in is the PPSL, the PPSL rules are that they are not allowed to compete in any other outside activity, whether it's a city program or something such as nothing but hoops. So they would be restricted that way. If they wanted to participate in ours, they could, but then they would have to not compete for the school team.
Yeah, my last question is that, so are you going to, are these programs going to be coached by volunteers throughout the community?
We will.
Much like, you know, the baseball and softball leagues?
We still will have some of the teachers coaching the program, and we, and the school will still be paying for teachers to be at the athletic directors to handle the registrations and alignment of teams. But we are open to parent coaches, and where needed, as we do at the elementary school level now, we do have some of the college students that are part-time staff that are learning how to coach and interested in athletics as a possible career goal. So they also would be eligible to coach for us.
It's great, great program.
Anything else? This is just a staff report, not just, but a staff report, so there's no action this evening. Thank you very much, Randy. Ten E, adopt a resolution approving side letter agreement between the city of San Bruno and the miscellaneous bargaining unit represented by the Teamsters Local 856 extending the existing memorandum of understanding and authorizing its execution by the city manager.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The memorandum of understanding and side letter agreement for the miscellaneous unit has expired. City staff and the bargaining unit has negotiated a side letter agreement extending the MOU to June 30, 2012, which is a 29-month agreement. At the expiration of this agreement, it would have been over four and a half years since the employees in this bargaining unit received any salary increases. The two-year agreement includes a 3.08% salary reduction equivalent to an eight-day furlough for July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, and a 3.85% salary reduction equivalent to 10 days of furlough from July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. As we did this past year, the city will post signs and post the scheduled furlough dates on the city website. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Tammy, just for the public's information, explain briefly, what is the miscellaneous bargaining unit?
The miscellaneous bargaining unit is comprised of about 91 employees. It includes everyone from maintenance workers to clerical staff to your cable tech, miscellaneous employees in each department, so usually frontline staff.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Action? Action?
I'll go ahead and introduce resolution for adoption.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number eleven, reported commissions, boards and committees, there aren't none this evening, twelve comments from council members.
Very quickly, came up by three different people today, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up. The striping of the crosswalks on east side of San Bruno Avenue are extremely faint and poor visibility and so honestly, three different people, maybe it's because I went to vote and they happen to be around the area, but that was brought up by three different individuals just today. So just to, if I could get some information as to if that is going to be planned, to be done or what the status of that is.
Anything else? Okay, we do have a closed session. Item thirteen, the city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section four nine five seven point six regarding direction for labor negotiations with the San Bruno Professional Firefighters Associations, Public Safety Mid Management Bargaining Unit, Mid Management Bargaining Unit, San Bruno Police Bargaining Unit and San Bruno Management Employees Association. And we will not have any reportable information.
The rest of the story.
So this meeting will adjourn to the next city council meeting to be held on June twenty-second, two thousand and ten, right here at the senior center.